Oh, chat. Hello. Welcome in. Welcome all. Welcome to the Canton Chronicles. I want to say hi to everyone currently in chat, but also, most importantly, hello if you are on the replay clue. Well, I can't talk. Replay crew. We love you all so, so, so much. It is day three in a row. We're going live here on the Canton Chronicle. I think this is a first for all of us over here. So if you all are ready, we have a lot to chat about. We have a select board meeting coming up in about thirteen-ish minutes. Welcome in, welcome in. Grab your pricks and ciders or grab your Josh red wine. Eric is not here to join me, not yet at least. And cheers to everyone. How are you all? What a crazy couple of days in the town of Canton and the whole investigation of it all and everything. It has been a wild ride. I was actually speaking to my, my co-host, John Como and Eric a little bit earlier today, saying, "It kind of feels like a vibe that we're back in, in trial days, except no trial." Just because the, the news that's been coming out the last few days has been non-stop, non-stop. Oh, look, and now everyone's asking, "Boozy, why are you by yourself? Where's, where's John? Where's John?" John is in Canton. John has joined some of our favorite locals, our favorite, favorite Cantonites. Our favorite boots on the ground are currently at Town Hall in Canton, Massachusetts. So we are going to be able to see that live. We're gonna see some comments. So you know, you know, there, there may be a sign or two or, or things. Welcome in, Brenda. Of course, we're gonna be seeing from Brenda. Of course, Brenda being Brenda. Don't, don't we know that by now? And, and hopefully, you know, we're gonna get down to some real work, right, Chris? Right, right. Okay. Boots on the ground. Boots on the ground. Hello, hello. Oh, and of course, I think we all need to say a special hello to Mr. Lucky. Mr. Lucky, thank you for coming on last night's stream. If you haven't watched our stream from yesterday, it was a grand old time. We really just was hung out, which is what we like to do here and keep it a little more low-key. So thank you, Lucky, for being first and foremost, a friend and also kind enough to share your time with us as well as all the fellow Kronks. Everyone's like, "Yes, Lucky!" Everyone's favorite witness, right? Of course, everyone's favorite plow driver, we will say. So I did briefly just want to show you all. If you didn't get to see the news broadcast yesterday, since we're gonna be going into the select board meeting in regards to Canton PD putting Sergeant Sean Good on suspension, obviously leave with pay pending the internal investigation. There was quite a bit of media, as we already know. There was media that showed up not only to Canton PD, but also to a couple of Cantonites households. So I did catch wind that our favorite Brenda being Brenda got to do just a little bit of an interview. So I do want to show you guys that first and foremost. It's only like a minute long. And I know we just love hearing her speak anyways. So I'm going to load this up while I've got you guys here. And then we're gonna be going into the select board meeting. So I hope you all are excited.
... still have their eyes on Good, holding signs and flags outside the Canton Police Department Monday, this time because the Canton Sergeant was just suspended by the department. In a statement, town officials wrote, "On Friday, October 24th, the town of Canton was notified of allegations of misconduct concerning a member of the town's police department, which was discovered during an investigation into a former member of a different..."
I think that's where a lot of people are missing out on this little tiny bit of information, just so you know, because I'm still getting a lot of comments. We're seeing them here on our chat. I'm seeing them on, on Twitter, as well as on my TikTok page too, and just on different content creators. Where is the connection between Sergeant Sean Good from Canton PD to Michael Proctor? Like, like, how do we know there's a connection there? And although we weren't told this is exactly coming from Proctor's data extraction, we have a clue just from this little tiny piece, which was the second press statement that they came up with. This is the one that Chief Perkins put his name on. That very last line where it says, "discovered during an investigation into a former member of a different law enforcement agency." Let's read that again. "Discovered during an investigation into a former member, former member of a different law enforcement agency." So we know it has nothing to do with someone within Canton. It's a different law enforcement agency. And they are a former member, meaning they are no longer working in, in, in there. So I think we can all keep guessing on that, right? I think that, that's a little obvious one. We'll continue.
... law enforcement agency. Another Karen Reed investigator made headlines less than two weeks ago. Former state trooper Michael Proctor lost his job after his insulting texts about Reed came to light. He recently dropped his appeal to get his job back amid the revelation that thousands of his personal texts will be provided to more defense attorneys. I-Team sources say some of those texts were racist.
If you don't trust the police, you're just not safe, no matter what, because mentally it takes a massive toll.
Longtime Karen Reed supporter Brenda Sweeney was one of the people outside Canton Police today. She says she's not surprised by Good's suspension, but believes it is more evidence of a movement by Canton's interim police chief to increase transparency.
He's come out and talked to us. He stood with us to hear us and something that we've never had for a very long time.
Right. I know. Everyone is so excited. The Sweeneys, the Sweeneys. Brent, exactly. It's, it's like, you, you know, when, when she was questioned, Brenda, like, "Oh, are you shocked that it was Sean Good?" And it's like, "No. No, no. If you know, you know. He has a long history with Proctor." And to hear that that was a name that unfortunately is now on suspension, um, no, we're not surprised. We're not surprised, Mr. Good. Mr. No fucking good. Um, and she's just so good at, at public statements, Brenda Sweeney. Like, she, she's just a champion, a chef's kiss. She has perfected the, the three-minute, you know, little clip. And she does it so swimmingly and so kindly and, and just knows how to give the right kind of burn. Every town needs a Brenda. Every town needs a Brenda. Okay, joining late. Any sign of Chris Albert yet? I spoke to John, like, maybe like 10 minutes ago, right before we went live. So no, nothing yet. We will see. I, I did, I did say over on the Twitter sphere, I was like, "I'm hoping, I'm hoping they all show, given the nature of what is going on, and I'm hoping Chief Perkins can show." Because like Brenda said, he really has gone out of the way. I, I know there's people in chat right now that have spoken to him. I know there's people watching that have spoken to him. I know there's people watching that want to speak to him. All you guys gotta do is shoot an email, if you're comfortable calling, if you're local to the town or local anywhere in the area, go and speak to him. He is really kind to speak to. Everything that I've been told, he's trying to fix it. He's trying. He's trying. And, and the fact that we actually have an officer suspended, granted with pay, which is the first step, two other steps. Um, you know what? Credit is due. Credit, credit is due there. I absolutely adore how Brenda slams them. It's so polite at the end. Exactly, exactly. Yep. You are so right. Lori Ann Good and Courtney Proctor went to school together. They actually graduated. So Sean Good, Courtney Proctor were a class of 1998 Canton High, and Mike Proctor was class of 2000. So there, there is a connection there. Those in town have spoken about them hanging out, and we've seen a couple of photographs. There's more photographs that haven't became public. So, you know, you know, are we surprised? No, no, we're not surprised. We're, we're not surprised. All right. Who else here is in chat? I want to say hi to some of you guys right before we have to go over to the select board. I'm guessing John's at the meeting. You are so correct, most talkative. Yes, John is in, is in the house. Not this house, not the bunny house, not 34 Fairview, but he's in, he's in the Canton house. Can you imagine? He got arrested. That'd be funny. Boozy giving boozy vibes. Yeah, it's, it's just, listen, we, sometimes he's gotta roll with it, right? Right? I'm doing better with the technology. We're, we're getting good over here. Hello, hello. Welcome in, welcome in. And again, if you want replay clue, crew, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being patient. Hopefully you're watching me on two times speed. I hope you can understand me on two times speed because I talk really fast. Eric is still working. Eric is stuck at work, but he'll be here shortly. Hello, Jerry. Hello, hello. You, you are amazing. I love you guys. You guys are so nice. Do we need, there goes Lucky being lucky. Do we need bail money? Maybe, maybe, ma- maybe. Hello, hello. This should be a good meeting. We did talk a lot about Sean Good last night. So, um, if you guys want to see, like, really first, how, how our initial thoughts were, heads up, go do it, go do it. Um, I'm so sorry. Their chat is going crazy. I'm not used to there being so many of you guys, and I'm here on my own. So I appreciate you all for being patient with me as we all, we're in this together. We're, we're working this together. We are. Okay. So John was here earlier. I was here earlier. I, I have it, like, loaded with the correct webpage. So fingers crossed we're able to do it right away. I swear to God, if it doesn't work, I'm actually going to go by head. I'm gonna go, oh, God. Gary! Look, oh, we got some OGs here. Terry Robbins. I love you so much, Terry. My fellow Dini. I love you so much. Do I see Mullins? I see Mullins. GM, I just saw. GM, where'd you go? I saw GM. GM's always in here. Thank you for always being in here. Full of questions. Me too. Me too. Chris, you can laugh at me. I'm totally okay. Hi, Jinx. Anyone want to place final bets on whether or not Chris will be in? I don't, I don't know. What do you guys think? Do, do you guys think? I don't know, man. I don't know. I, like I said, I hope they're all there. This, this is part of their job. If you saw my tweet, you know, I told you guys, the select board is essentially their boss. The Canton PD's boss. So I hope, I hope, and I, and I hope Perkins is there. Like I said, he, he doesn't have to go into details about it. I know that's against policy, but he, there could be a statement. I can't, I can't promise that, but that's, that's my hope. That's my hope. Hi, Richie. Okay. Let me see if I can get us rolling because it should be going on right now. Oh, God, there goes my heartbeat. Okay. Share screen. Share screen. Okay, share screen. And it is that channel. We're doing great. We're doing great. Okay, we will reload. Play. Yes, I did it, chat! He's there.
Everybody, welcome to the select board meeting of Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, 7:00 PM at Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. In the salon meeting room. Just to remind everybody, this is being recorded by Canton Community Television and can also be viewed at later dates. Just like to make a comment from the select board. On Friday, October 24th, the town of Canton was notified of allegations of misconduct concerning a member of the town's police department, which was discovered during an investigation into a former member of a different law enforcement agency. Immediately after becoming aware of the allegations, the town engaged an independent investigator to conduct a thorough administrative investigation into allegations of misconduct. Sergeant Sean Good was immediately placed on paid administrative leave pending the outcome that eternal affairs, of that eternal affairs investigation. The town of Canton, the Canton Police Department take this matter very seriously. As this concerns an active and ongoing administrative investigation, no additional information is available to release at this time. As for the process, Massachusetts Civil Service Law, General Law, Chapter 31, and Massachusetts Collective Bargaining Law, General Law, Chapter 150E, will guide the town's actions moving forward. The town of Canton's police employees are covered by the Civil Service Law. They also unionize under the Collective Bargaining Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 150E. Civil Service, Civil Service Law requires the town to comply with statutory measures in order to discipline or discharge any civil service employee. It can be very frustrating for members of the public to understand that the town cannot take immediate action to terminate an employee as it does in the private sector, nor can a town place a civil service employee on unpaid leave absence, an employee being under a criminal indictment. This case is not a criminal case. The town is legally required to perform an administration investigation to allegations of misconduct. In the event the administration investigation produces sufficient credible evidence of a policy violation, the town is legally required to have a hearing. For any contemplated discipline of over five-day suspension, the hearing must take place prior to the enforcement of punishment. In other words, before employee can be cut off of any pay, the hearing must take place. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether or not just cause exists to discipline or discharge the employee. If the employee disagrees with the hearing officer appointing authorities' decision, the employee has an appeal right through either Civil Service Commission under General Law, Chapter 31, or Labor Arbitrator under General Law, Chapter 150E, in the collective bargaining agreement. Thus, we are legally required to comply with the law. However, the town is working expeditiously as possible to resolve this matter. Thank you. That being said, I'm gonna read a statement before we do public comment. Public comment of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question-and-answer format. There'll be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and the town you live in. Your address is not required. I would ask all members of the audience, be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or is unable to do it due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. That being said, we'll start public meeting at this time being 7:03, and there's somebody right up at the podium.
My name is Kathleen Howley, resident of Canton. I came to speak tonight because of the disrespect shown to speakers at the last meeting. Mr. Chairman, you read the rules at the beginning of public comment, and they are strictly enforced, rules are rules, on us. At three minutes, we're cut off and not even allowed to finish our sentence. The rules also say there will be no response to any public comment referring to the board. Last week, after public comments, Chris Albert began his job of reading agenda items by saying, and I quote, "First up on the agenda tonight, let's get some real work done here." It was snarky and juvenile, and everyone knew what it meant. If the speakers had praised Chris, there would have been no such comment. But he wasn't interrupted and told to follow the rules. In fact, the chair said nothing. Perhaps it will be addressed during this meeting, perhaps not. Perhaps the board will pretend it never happened. And who were the people who were the object of the snark? First up was Brenda Sweeney, the bravest person in Canton. Next up was Peter Murphy, who served this, this town with integrity as a police officer for 30 years. A simple thank you for your service would do, but instead, Peter is threatened and maligned by some people in town with lies that grow bigger and bigger. The third was John Como, whose family has lived in Canton for generations. Andrea Como, John's mother, and a lovely person, died a few weeks ago. I just found out yesterday, or I would have been at her services. Her obituary contained this line, "She will be remembered for her refusal to remain silent when something mattered." What a line to have in one's obituary. We all, or most of us, learned that from our parents growing up, to live life with integrity and to speak out when it mattered. I'm gonna end by asking the chair, if there's gonna be any response, which may not happen, to not respond by subjecting us to seeing Chris read another non-apology apology. It's like watching a hostage video being made. And please don't waste more taxpayers' money by issuing another vague, non-statement statement. We, we read them and say, "What? Someone, we don't know who, did something, and we don't know what." They only create fog. I'll end by saying, "Elected officials should hold themselves to a higher standard, not a lower one. And if someone can't stand listening to the public, they should not be in public service." Thank you.
Brenda Sweeney, Canton, in my opinion. Recently, someone rode by us and shouted, "F John!" I'm not using the whole F-word, but "F John." Wow. At our last meeting, in typical Canton fashion, you little helpers tried to embarrass me by mocking my age. I love the way it backfired, showing the world the reality that is Canton. The mentality of these vulgar bullies that thrive by preying on others with violence, intimidation, harassment, and public ridicule. Snakes in the grass who'd rather get attention from murderers than fight for justice. That feeble attempt to quiet the noise is just one more way those little helpers are saying, "F John." Poor John. You little helpers were right there beside those murdering psychopaths demanding prison for Karen Reed. You tried to be good doobies, but the pressure must be getting brutal because now you're turning on John, the victim. The guy that got killed. You were all grieving him. Now you're pissed at the guy who lost his life in this fiasco. Now it's "F John." We love the extra pressure from, coming from the Canton Chronicles reviews of the trial footage. We saw the lies on the witness stand, the people that weren't really in CF McCarthy's, the timelines that don't really work when you look at them closely. Now it sounds like Mikey's cloud data brought us the suspension of Sergeant Good. Alleluia. That suspension itself is finally a breath of fresh air for our decent officers who need our support. "F John" means you little helpers are catching heat you didn't anticipate. That scenario didn't quite play out the way those murderers promised, did it? Sad you agreed in the first place, but now you're screwed. Think about it. You know the truth. You helped them get away with it. They own you now. They'll be back demanding more. And don't think they won't threaten you. You might think you're friends with them, but they don't care about you. They only care about how they can use you. It's a double whammy because knowing also makes you a threat. No telling what'll happen when murdering psychopaths have their back up against the wall. You didn't, you didn't have a care in the world, but now you need eyes in the back of your head. Living in Canton will start to feel like you're living in a horror movie, like you checked into the Bates Motel. Norman's around every corner. He has the keys to your room, and there's nowhere left to hide. Some sage advice, when you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. Maybe it's time to do the right thing while you still can, before that window closes completely. We'll be back because making Canton safe is real work, Mr. Albert. So spare us the petulant little comments and try acting like the professional you're supposed to be for the short time you have left in that chair. Thank you.
Jonathan Como, Attleboro. Good evening. I'm here tonight to get some real work done, which apparently means reading. All right. So I did a little homework, and I found this lovely Massachusetts State Police report dated February 21st, 2022. Crystal clear, right here. The very first line, both Julie and Chris Albert were at the waterfall that night, then followed to Brian Albert's home, 34 Fairview. But wait, there's more. Sergeant Yuri Bukanik doubles down in the report and again stated the purpose. The purpose of the interview quote was to get their recollection events, both at the bar and from 34 Fairview. That's two times one report. But under oath, Chris said, "He walked home, didn't drive, didn't follow, walked straight home, didn't even brush his teeth. Maybe he should have. A little fluoride would have helped with the memory." So I'm stuck wondering, did the state police make a typo twice? Or did Chris make a pit stop at 34 and just say he forgot? So maybe walking home in Chris's mind is a metaphor, like, "Let's get some real work done." The only thing working harder than this board member lately is the delete key on a lot of people's cell phones. Anyways, we're here to get some real work done. I figured I'd help by pointing out this little contradiction. Consider it a public service brought to you by a taxpayer who still remembers what the word "integrity" means. Thank you.
Hi, Jack Conde, Canton. I just want to thank Chief Perkins for what he's done for the Canton Police Department so far. He's very accessible and easy to talk to. I appreciate the time he takes to speak with the residents about their concerns. I wish I had a police chief like him 22 years ago, when I had to file a lawsuit against a Canton police officer for undue influence on my 95-year-old great uncle who also lived in Canton. I tried to get help from the Canton Police, the State Police, the Attorney General's Office, but no one would listen. I did eventually win my lawsuit against a Canton police officer. Maybe if there had been someone with integrity at the top of the Canton Police Department back then, that Canton cop wouldn't have felt empowered to act upon and prey upon my great uncle. Thank you. And you all know who he was.
Want to go over to the right for one?
Coming to address, if possible, the idea that the select board has been asked to support the pickleball again. And I would just caution and hope that they think about before they write any letter of recommendation or support of how much, how many problems there were last year when we tried to do this. The neighbors weren't told. The money was, was huge. There just seems to be a lot of discrepancy, and I hope that a lot of this is smoothed out before the select board makes a recommendation to approve it again. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Peter Murphy, Marshfield. Good evening, Mr. Duty, honorable board members. My opinion, seriously, I want to address some very concerning events that have allegedly taken place here in Canton under the watch and ongoing responsibility of the select board to oversee and deliver municipal services, including public safety. Of great concern to me was allowing the weaponizing of your police department to conduct lawfare and bring suspect charges, some laughed out of court, against citizens exercising their First Amendment rights. In my opinion, except for the exceptional choice to bring Chief Perkins to heel Canton Police Department and ultimately the town, once again, the select board, aka police commissioners, have at the very least failed the residents of Canton miserably by not ensuring transparency, accountability, trust, and equal justice for all. Please consider these issues as serious concerns of mine. A vote for the police audit, but the failure to ensure that they conducted and delivered a legitimate, credible, and unbiased investigation and report, a stacked deck by Bob McCarthy, three to two vote guaranteed every time. Failure to disclose a serious pedestrian accident involving a town vehicle driven by the police chief of Canton. Failure to disclose a sidebar deal agreement on an outstanding tax liability opened by the select board member doing business as D and E Pizza Shop, with permits being granted after being reluctantly admitted to by TA, Town Administrator's Duty. Town funds apparently inappropriately expended for burial arrangements of a dog. Menacing and threatening and disparaging comments to John Como and even worse, his family. Really? Really? worse, his family. Really? Really? Last but surely not least, and what should be deemed by this Select Board and the residents of Canton as the most concerning, most reprehensible egregious, would be last week's comment by Mr. Albert, your Select Board clerk, after the comment period was closed by the chair. And I'll quote, "Now let's get some real work done." And that was in comment about statements that were made by Brenda Sweeney and myself about investigating in truth and justice for the death of police officer, Boston Police Officer John O'Keefe. That was the clerk's disgraceful, disparaging, reprehensible retort to Brenda Sweeney and my call to arms and to find truth and justice for John O'Keefe. The Boston Police Officer found on his, on his, Chris Albert's brother's lawn. Shame on him, shame on the Select Board. We ain't got no quit. 12 years of revelations from the phone of a close friend of this family, Trooper Proctor, may just be the tip of the iceberg leading to the suspension of Sergeant Good. We will be back. We ain't got no quit and truth and justice for Officer John O'Keefe.
I believe we run out of time, but is there any one other person who wants to speak? See none. We'll conclude public comment and we will start number one on the agenda, please, Mr. Albert.
Public hearing regarding the application for a new Section 12 general on purpose wine and malt license for Blue Hill Regional LLC, Blue Hill Recreation LLC, DBA Blue Hill Ski Area located at 4001 Washington Street, Canton, MA 02021. The Town of Canton Legal Notice, Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Mass. General Laws as amended that the Canton Select Board, acting as the licensing board for the Town of Canton, will hold a public hearing regarding the application for a new Section 12 general on premises wine and malt license for Blue Hill Regional, uh, Blue Hill Recreation LLC, DBA Blue Hill Ski Area located at 4001 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. 02021. The meeting will be held on November 4th, 2025, on or after 7:00 PM in the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. 02021. Chris Albert, Select Board Clerk. I move that the board open the public hearing.
What should we made? What should we made? Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 5-0. Um, where do you go? Oh, there you go. I'm sorry. Yep. Randy, you're off. Randy, we're putting you in the back now. You're in the back.
I got a lot more to read than just that for you.
Good evening, sir.
So hello, Canton Select Board. My name is Jeff Hamer. I'm the owner and operator of Blue Hill Ski Area. First off, no, thank you. Thank you for this department from town. Luckily, it snowed, and I'm expecting everybody to bring the snow again.
Oh, God. Okay, here we go. Um, so he sounded flustered. He sounded a little flustered and a little upset. Um, okay. Uh, that, that was a lot, but can we, can I just say, that was just all, every single person that just spoke was frickin' incredible. Every single last one of them was incredible. Incredible. I can't even like, that was, first and foremost, I told John I was gonna do this, um, and he, he said, totally do it. It's, it's what we've always spoken about anyways. At the end of the day, everyone needs to remember why we're here. And that reason is John O'Keefe. Period. Point blank. Period. At the end of the day, we are here to get justice for John O'Keefe. None of us have forgotten John O'Keefe. None of us. And I wanted to pull up his picture right after the Select Board meeting so that we all can remember exactly who was the person that started all of this. It was the injustice that was slain upon Boston Police Officer John O'Keefe. Period. He was 16 years into his career at the Boston Police Department. He was found on a 31-year, 31-year veteran of the Boston Police Department, that same department, Brian Albert's front lawn at 34 Fairview Road. If you didn't know, John O'Keefe was not unknown in the Town of Canton. The town had previously rallied around the O'Keefe family when they had their extremely unfortunate circumstances, when John lost both not only his sister, but his brother-in-law. And if you didn't know, around that same time, in that same time span, John also lost his Pat friend, his, his best friend, Pat Rogers, who also was a fellow Boston Police Officer. So while we are hearing some new information, or should I say bullshit quotes, coming from the Boston top cop Commissioner Michael Cox, and how this does not at all include his department, and he will no longer be discussing anything regarding this case, I think Commissioner Cox and those that want this to be swept underneath the rug, to remember that there is a whole lot of us that are not going anywhere until we get finally the truth, transparency, and justice for Boston Police Officer John O'Keefe. And on that note, because if you don't know, I like to be a little, a little, a little petty sometimes. I'm going to mute John for one second while I finish this up. If any of you would like to send your regards to Commissioner Cox, here is his email address. police.commissioner@boston.gov. He said he's not going to answer any of our questions. He's not going to answer even the mainstream media. However, what we have learned throughout this entire time, since January 29th, 2022, that when it comes to public pressure, be it to other media channels, be it to local government, like the Canton Select Board, be it to larger channels, or even the justice system, period. If there's one thing that they can't and will never take away from us, is our First Amendment right and our voices. So if you have questions, comments, or concerns specifically for the Boston top cop, Boston Police Department Commissioner Michael Cox, shoot him an email. Tell him how you really feel. Okay, let's bring in John Camo. Johnny?
Hello. Hello, is this thing on?
Hello. Hello. That was so good, all of you.
Trying to do some real work here.
You're, you, you know what? You all frickin' brought down the house. The house. Holy hell. Oh, my God. You should have seen, you should have seen the comments. Like, chat was so, all of you, every, every single one of you were just chef's kiss. Like, it was incredible. And can I?
Eric was, Eric was there, Whitey was there.
Yeah, you guys left me hanging. It's okay. I think I did okay.
Listen, it's because we trust you now.
What a concept. I'm.
I know. Trust the girl. Don't pin it on the girl. Trust the girl.
Someone better clip that. Don't pin it on the girl. Trust the girl. Oh, God. Oh, my God. Okay, we got a couple of super chats. Oh, hell, show. Got to get the real work done. Yes. Hotel Delta, I, I hope you appreciated that moment I had for John. And Terry, hold on, hold on. Terry Gloria, 1999. Thank you for always putting it out there. Justice for John O'Keefe. Frickin' love you. Thank you so much, Terry. And also, we have Mr. Duck Daddy, Mr. Richie. Always appreciate you and your insights. 1999. Justice for Officer John O'Keefe. I love you guys so much. Like, if, if it wasn't for all of us and commenting and being obnoxious and getting in their faces, wearing chicken suits, rubber ducks, showing up, rain, snow, sleet, hot ass, humid weather, day in and day out, like, none of this would have been happening. And I said this also in a TikTok video, it does not matter if you show your face, if you watch a simple YouTube livestream, if you do a like, if you comment or repost like a tweet, you're on TikTok or Instagram, wherever you're doing, even the most minimal, what you may not even think is a big deal, anything that gets the word out about any of this is amazing. The fact that we are almost at four years of John, of John O'Keefe's murder, and there's still so many people that care, like, all of you that are still here watching, I can't even, like, it's amazing. It's incredible. So, again, thank you. I'm, I'm really emotional because the news of Sean.
You're doing awesome.
The news of Sean Good, like, he has been one of those names I've been really on and on and on about. And I'm like, he's, he's in the thick of it. And now.
Boosie, I'll tell you, you, you have, but a lot of people haven't. He's kind of had a little bit more of a free pass than others. You know, it, it just, it is, because he, they tried to make his role in this so minimal.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that. The E's coming in.
Oh, the E, the E boy. Let's, um, add him to the stage.
Bring in the E. Free the E.
Oh, God, he's gonna pull you.
He's gonna be, because, because he's got, yeah, I'm taking backroads to try to be quiet.
Yeah.
I just, should I stop at Matt Kelly's? No, I'm not gonna.
Well, you know, he's not, Chris is not gonna be there. He's, he's getting real work done.
At the Elsie's table. He's getting real work done. Now I'm going to Elsie's table. No.
No, no.
No, you're not.
No, no, no. I am getting out of Dodge.
Take two. Doing the speed limit.
But Boosie, the, you, you have, you have, a lot of other people have given him a free pass because, like we said, all he was, he was on the desk, he took a call, he went there, he went in the house, and that was about it. Right?
Yeah.
But oh, no, no, it wasn't. Because now there's text messages. That means, that means there was some sort of communication, whether it be jokes, rude joke, like, we don't know what it is, right? But it was in the middle of an investigation. Right? So.
I mean, more than that, though, you know, he, there's the, even if you didn't know of any insights behind the scenes, I guess you could say, uh, but behind the new cubicles, which we will get to, of Canton PD, um, if you didn't know any of that, no, hold on. At least.
I do have to, I do have to get to this because this is more important than anything else. Tonight, there was a woman there, Kathleen Holly.
One second. Finish my one sentence.
Oh, my God, it's about my dead mother, but go ahead.
One second, and then you can, you can talk all you want.
No, she's dead anyways. We'll let it go.
Anyways, no, just briefly, just like I said, it does, it doesn't matter if you don't know anything about the comings and goings, the ins and outs of Canton, okay? All you guys got to do is pull up those court docs and pull up the evidence, at least what we're able to see. Look at the pre-trial hearings to see exactly what, you know, things we didn't get to see, and you'll see just how in the thick of it, someone like Sergeant Sean Good was. That's all. He's a little, he's a little angry. You can talk about your mom now?
John, you're up, buddy.
No, he left. He, he. He left.
Maybe he got pulled over.
Can you imagine? John, did you get pulled over by Canton PD? You, did you get pulled over?
No, no, no. An idiot called me while I'm live, and it knocked me off the car speakers, so I couldn't hear anything.
An idiot called me. Oh, my God, everyone's like, everyone's congratulations, you got the whole public comment. Thank you. Thank you. John, you can talk about your mom now and Kathleen, because that was a beautiful.
No, I didn't want to talk about my mom. I just wanted to thank Kathleen Holly for, for, I haven't spoken to Kathleen in almost a year. Um, she had a bout with cancer that, um, obviously she looks really good. So, um, so congratulations on beating cancer, Kathleen. And, um, and it was very nice that she, um, she, you know, she got up there and spoke very, uh, very nicely of my mother. That was it. I just wanted to thank her for that.
That was very sweet. There was a lot of Canton folk in our chat, and, um, they were just saying all kinds of things about, I mean, they'll say all kind of things about everyone, but I, I don't think we've seen Kathleen's face in quite some time. Uh, yeah, so it was, it was really nice. I mean, it was really nice to see her. Um, we, we do need to touch upon Jack, one of, I said in chat, one of my favorite human beings, like, ever of all time. He's just one of the kindest individuals. Like, if you, if you know Jack, if you, if you met him out boots on the ground, maybe you even saw him, he went to trial quite a bit for both Karen's trials. Um, he is just like, he's the type of guy that he's like, oh, you're cold? Here's my sweatshirt. You know, he's, it's just, just a nice guy. And he finally, finally is telling his story publicly. Um, so that was incredible. And honestly, very brave. Very brave. Very brave.
No, you got a lot of upset people. And, and, and Chris's antics every week just keep fueling it. If he just would, if he just would keep his mouth shut, it would have all been over.
I know. I know. I know.
He can't help himself.
He can't. He just can't.
I want to say, welcome to new member Casey. Thank you so much. And, okay, what the duck? Again, what the duck with five Canton Kronk memberships. I, I just.
Well, hey, I, at some point, we're gonna have to address the memberships.
Well, we will get, we will, it's a.
Okay, I'm just saying, at some point.
We, we went live three days in a row. You know, we're, we're killing over here.
Did you, did you, were you able to, uh, play the newest music?
I have not played that yet because, um, I wanted to, I wanted to go over the video with Brenda Sweeney's statement at WBZ, so we went over that. And that was, that was pretty much all we got into. It was a good lead-in to one of the best Select Board meetings with you guys speaking out in, in a long time, with the amount of you that, that not only showed up. Eric, I wasn't expecting you to be there.
Yeah, I know. I got lucky. Things changed. I switched my night off and, uh, had to make it happen.
I love that. I love that. There was a full house. Um, and we, we had five, six of you minus the pickleball. Five of you guys? Right?
Yep.
Oh, oh, here was a big question. They didn't show Brenda's sign. Did she have a sign?
Uh, well, yeah, the, the selection, I mean, I, yeah, the fact is, the Select Board saw it.
So what did the sign say?
Uh, Chief Perkins, it's something like Chief Perkins, uh, is showing what, showing us what real police work is. Something to that effect.
Oh, it was literally exactly what she had yesterday.
Yes, exactly. Same, same sign, uh, in the, in the, in the walker chair.
Oh, she had a walker chair. Oh, that's frickin' funny. Oh, she got a walker chair. Oh, oh, that's really funny.
You know, the other, the other thing I noticed is there was no, JR, JR didn't put any time limits necessarily on anybody, and, uh, he was willing to go past six speakers, uh, because I believe there was.
Well, you get 15 minutes. Well, no, I mean, you get 15 minutes. So, I mean, mine was a minute and a half.
Yeah, but they, they, they state the ground rules are three minutes, five speakers.
Per speaker. Uh, I thought it was three minutes per, uh, three minutes, you get up to three minutes per speaker, no more than 15 minutes. So, I mean.
I think what's really going on there.
Spoke for a minute.
Yeah, I think what's really going on there is JR is just, you know, he's 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 listening to the to the, he's listening to the community and not putting a time limit on it. And, you know, who knows what 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 the board's thinking right now, but at the end of the day, at least they didn't, you know, try to put some restraints on on the public speaking.
Right. Right. You guys chat for a second. I actually have a clip from Resistance to Silence that I need to load it. Um, that shows, it shows Brenda's, um, sign. So just give me a second. You guys chat for a second.
Okay. Eric?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, were you able to, um, look at the, um, the membership topic that, um, eventually we will talk about?
I did.
What do you think about that?
Uh, I think that's, uh, you know, we're going in the right direction with that.
Yeah, me too. Okay, all right. Cuz we love our members. We love our Kronks. We, you know, we really do. We appreciate them and
I think this, you know, it's gonna evolve as time goes on with this whole membership thing's new to us.
Yep. Uh, also, uh, it, uh, it appears that, uh, it's going to be, uh, the the totals for the, um, the donations, uh, comes to about a thousand dollars. So each hockey program's gonna get five hundred dollars from us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Eric, you're gonna have to talk to, uh, Magoo or RA, and, um, maybe what we could do is
I think we need to just get him the information, cuz I think he wanted
He can just, he can just, he can just send his five hundred directly to Charles Town, and we'll send our five hundred directly to Kent. And that way, we don't have, it's right, yeah.
Make, it just makes it easier.
Yeah, yep.
However he wants to do it, we'll let him decide. But, uh, he had mentioned that to me, and, you know, I'm sure he wants to text right off.
Of course.
Why not?
Yeah, right. Awfully nice of Whitey to come all the way up.
Yeah, did you get the hundred out of him yet?
Oh, man. He's supposed to remind me.
I know, I forgot.
He's, that's all right. He's, uh, well, me and him are going the same way. I just don't know if I'm in front of him or not.
Well, he doesn't hide much. He'll be back in Canton soon.
No, correct. Was that enough talking? Did you load your, did you load your video?
I did. So, um, this is from yesterday when in between, yesterday, no, 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 it's not. No, we wanna do Hillary Duck. So yesterday, so yesterday, that's not, okay. Um, so, uh, yesterday, during all the hoopla, if you guys remember, we had one initial press release, the very first one, and that's when the OG boots on the ground were like, we're going to Canton PD, we're going, we're going, going. So around noon time, they got there. So this is from outside of Canton PD. So this is the sign that Brenda had tonight, which I see nothing wrong with it. So this is her full statement. I wanna give credit to Resistance to Silence for always being the boots that can just get to like any place at any time, which is fricking incredible. So thank you to Dana and Tracy, and here's Brenda Sweeney.
Finally, 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 we're gonna have trust and transparency. Cuz you know, Rafferty would have swept everything right under the rug. We haven't even
Now, let's hope it's something good.
Let's see what the select board say.
Yeah, I know, right, yeah.
She literally goes, let's see what the select board says on Tuesday. She was, she was like, okay, what what did the select board say? Uh, well, what did the select board say? I I bled out a little bit because that, that, I was not expecting that much of a statement, to be completely honest.
Uh, I I actually like the fact that he spoke about the guidelines, so that the normal average, uh, random citizen knows what the process is.
Right.
Absolutely, cuz they have to follow the process.
They have to follow the process. So at least tell it, that's great. I like, I love the fact that JR put it out there and says, this is what we can and can't do, people. So don't, you know, which they should have been doing all along with all these other things. But they didn't, they
Doesn't mean that they still can't, that doesn't
Boys?
You there, John?
He muted himself.
I don't know what happened to John.
He muted himself. You can, you can talk, Eric.
I muted myself so that you wouldn't hear my car.
Uh-oh, what happened?
No, it just, no, I just was going faster.
Well, what I was gonna say was that, you know, sure, they they don't need to say anything about what's going on in the Canton Police Department right now, other than what they did. But that still doesn't excuse them for not publicly speaking out about Chris Albert and him being on that board. And, you know, there's there's still no reason for them not to make a statement on their own, individually.
They could have made these statements about Kevin Albert when his stuff was going down. They, you know what I mean? They waited until afterwards. They actually let the the, uh, the Police Audit Committee tell everybody of what, you know, what went on. They could have done that.
Mm-hmm. Well, that reminds me, I can pull up the little piece of paper that, um, thankfully, someone sent me regarding Kevin Albert's internal investigation, if you wanna go over that briefly.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, so, if you guys don't know, the entire internal investigation that Canton, literally Canton PD did in regards to Kevin Albert and the whole went down to the Cape, got drunk with now disgraced police officer, Massachusetts State Police Lead Investigator, Michael Proctor.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Um, where he misplaced his gun and badge, and then they joked about it via text message. Because the the text messages, uh, get them in trouble for for everything nowadays. So, you guys can actually find the entire, all the internal documents. Some of it is redacted, um, like some of the, um, logs with them and their work schedules and whatnot. You can see parts of Albert's, but you can't obviously see other people's redactions and stuff. So I went through some of it, and I was like, is there anything interesting in here? I'm like, of course, the whole thing's interesting. And then I saw a letter from Helena Rafferty. So this may be new to some of you. Some of you, this may be, oh, my God, I remember this. For some of you, it's old news. So, uh, at the beginning of June twenty twenty, was it three? It was four, twenty twenty-four, they first told Kevin that they were going to do an investigation. And that he had to basically hold on to everything, don't dump anything, don't delete anything. That was like his warning of sorts. Then, in June, it was like June twentieth, couple weeks later, he gets another letter, a formal letter, saying that he had to hand over certain bits and pieces of information. Then, this letter happens. So there was two June letters. It seems like he didn't hand over anything. So then Helena Rafferty, then Canton Police Chief, sent this letter. So in this letter dated July eighth, twenty twenty-four, obviously, you can see Detective Albert as part of the ongoing investigation, can you please provide records of communications such as calls, Facebook messages, Instagram messages, text messages, emails, or other exchanges on third-party messaging apps between yourself and Trooper Proctor during July twenty twenty-two? So firstly, they only wanted communications from July twenty twenty-two, narrowing down the scope. Secondly, they didn't want his actual device, his actual cellphone. No, 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 no. They wanted Kevin Albert himself to basically pick and choose what he thought was relevant, and probably an attorney, and a union attorney, pick and choose what to go through, and then hand it over for his own internal investigation.
You mean self-report?
Literally, self-reporting. Like, excuse me, e- excuse me, ex- excuse me? So, here are my concerns. Obviously, that was done at a different time and space when they did tend to sweep things under the rug. Um, Berkowitz and Rafferty, as it's known, did did not wanna report really anything. They, this was done out of force when it came to the whole Kevin Albert situation, and it was because of the trial that was ongoing. Will we see the same circumstance when it comes to the investigation into Sergeant Sean Good?
My predictions, no.
Do you think it's gonna be the same, or do you think it's gonna be different?
It's gonna be different, very, very different.
Do you think so, or do you hope so?
It's going to be very different.
I hope so. I'm very hopeful just because of how Perkins has been to the community, community period, and also how they handled this current not-so-good situation. That makes me feel more hopeful. But there's still something in the back of my mind that goes, they they could still get away with this and do what they want, you know, and like twist the narrative. I guess.
I'm gonna tell you right now, there's no way he survives this, um, employment-wise. I don't care what anyone says. I I heard the, I heard the, um, the speech, what they can and can't do, the investigation, all that. There's no way he survives it.
Okay, yeah, so you were there. Do you remember exactly what JR said? Because it was a lot of words all at once, and my brain was going, whoa, like, my brain was exploding.
Um, I do and I don't. I I just don't have the bandwidth at the moment to, uh, regurgitate it all back out, but it's something we can, uh, we can discuss at another
John's like, I'm driving, I'm driving, I'm on a show, and you're trying to make me think all at the same time, and I'm like, yes. You can, you can do three things all at the same time. Why not?
I can. I have ADD, but it's just, you know, I'm I'm trying to behave. You're doing such a fricking good job. I don't want the show to go off the rails, so I'm trying to behave.
The show always goes off the rails. It's okay.
No, no, I mean, there's, I I haven't even eaten, let alone had any cricks and ciders, so.
You should have eaten something beforehand.
I didn't have time. I had to let the dog out.
So, this is a good question. Who was hired to do the independent IA investigation? We have no idea. We, we don't know. Uh, I don't even Yeah, well, does the select board even know?
They should. That's the thing. They, they should be aware of this. And I said it before. They are the police commissioners. Charlie's the everyday police. Charlie technically is the the boss, being the town administrator of the police chief. Everything should at least, he should be aware of everything. He should be, like, I mean, especially, especially this kind of stuff. Sometimes there's stuff like small, you know, hey, this guy was late, this, that doesn't have to go to the top, or this guy got caught doing, I don't know, like, little minimal stuff. But this is a, a significant thing that should, that they should be aware of. And they don't have to tell the public, but they should be aware of it. And if they're not, if the select board's not aware of it, and if Charlie Duty's not aware of it, then there's a problem.
But but here's my other question. Because Duty put out the initial statement, and then clearly Perkins saw that, was like, no, 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 we gotta fix this. Because Duty has such deep connections to to really a lot, but specifically, like, the murder investigation of John O'Keefe and all those main players, because his daughter was literally there.
Daughter was in the house.
Like, we, we need to keep discussing that, cuz that's a big deal. Um, is it possible that the town administrator, Charlie Duty, who released the first press statement, is it possible he knows more, because he is still connected to everything, and then possibly most, if not all, the select board doesn't?
Uh, it could be, but I'd still be okay with that, because he is the town administrator. So as long as, as long as he's doing what he thinks is in the best interest of the town, not for him and his daughter, but for the town, then I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm not okay with that.
The public doesn't have to know everything. The public just needs to know that they know everything.
Susan, Susan says boozy for president, and if I were your president, I would make sure we all know the truth and transparency up until a certain point. And if Duty dudes knows more, then that's not cool. Um, it it needs to get out there. Because, because, because they, JR did say, and this was asked on Twitter, cuz people were going into the rules and regulations and policies and whatnot, that it has to be like a five-day suspension, then after those five days, he's supposed to have a have a hearing. Firstly, is it a private hearing, or is it a public hearing? And can the public attend? That would be my first question. And then, second off, it's been more than five days. That was, that was the twenty-fourth of October. Today is November fourth. It's been more than five business days. I always say business days, because this is how, you know, the courts work, is business days. So it's been more than five business days. Did he have this hearing yet?
I would assume that these hearings are never public, because it has to do with personnel issues. So it's going to be a private, there's a union, it's gonna be, so I'm sure he had a union rep there. And, um, and the town lawyer, the town, you know, and and that's why, and that's why Charlie gets paid the hundreds of thousands of dollars that he gets, along with the lawyers.
Right. Oh, here's a good point. This is why I love you guys so much. Duty literally lives two doors from Sean Good.
Well, he should know everything, huh?
Uh, like
But the problem is, is it, and it's not a problem. I I I shouldn't say the problem is. The Charlie Judy, for as nice of a man he is, and I say that because he's always been nice to me, I don't, and and from everything I've seen of all the years around town, he's always been nice, right? He's not that type of person that will say, like, literally, he doesn't say bad things to people, mean things. He's not that kind of person. He is, he really is a nice, soft-spoken guy, very proper. That being said, he was the fire chief for many years, right? And before that, the fireman. He worked with, he, side by side with all of these people. So if, in order for him to navigate doing right by by the town versus doing right by a colleague, or like I keep saying, a professional courtesy to some people, that's on him, and that only he can answer whether or not he was able to do it.
John has no idea some of the comments I'm pulling up. That's why I keep like giggling and stuff. Well, uh, Joy says, well, the Grinch was nice to his dog.
That's true.
Like, not, not, not lying. Oh, he's a salesman. This is how I feel. When, when he said during one of those meetings a while ago, like, to to Brenda, you know, can we not mention Berkowitz's name again, because, you know, he's no longer with us and can respect the family? We can respect the family, but we also need to continually talk about Berkowitz, because he's heavily in some of these cases. Hello? Like, we cannot just not sweep it. No, we have to talk about him. He was chief, like
And he found, he found evidence.
Oh, my God, don't even give
Allegedly.
No, he did. It's in documents. Don't even make me
Yes, and 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 it's in documents that Chris went to Fairview.
I will, no, no, it's not only in court testimony, grand jury notes, if we had transcripts, but in court filing motions, in photographs, no, it is literally, he's, he literally make you so mad. February fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the reason
I am so mad.
Reason why this little piece makes me so annoyed was because how egregious this taillight piece was, okay? This is what really aggravates me. What do you mean, you were driving by thirty-four Fairview Road? Okay, cool, you're the chief. Maybe you're just like chilling and driving around. And you happen to just like look over, and you see a bright red taillight piece that magically no one else saw. So you stop to your, you stop your vehicle, and you walk, and you walk over, and and you call Mikey, you know, I don't know if it was it was, it was, if it was Mikey, well, he called Lenka, and then Lenka called either Mikey or Yuri. I can't remember. Anyways, so one of them goes over to thirty-four Fairview, takes a photo of it. Why the hell was this piece of taillight found over a shoe print? A melted-in-the-snow shoe print. It was laying over it completely like clean.
Because the laws of physics cease to exist Because the laws of physics ceased to exist near 34 Fairview.
But that actually drives me kooka kachoo, because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. If an EMT. Or, or one of, or one of the girls was to step on it, or, or one of the cops was, they would have, they would have. Stepped on it, they would have felt it, they would have heard it, they probably would have slipped a little bit. There's, there's, there's no way. There's no, this is one of the things about this case.
None of them knelt down in it. Who was kneeling? There was, everyone's kneeling down, not one person knelt in any of it?
Literally on the taillight, on the taillight.
Alright, I'm gonna run in, I gotta run in the house right now.
Make it make sense, make it make sense. You can't make it make sense. That's the annoying thing. You can't.
You can if you wanna tell the truth.
But when they, but Eric, when they say, you know, Charlie Duty, we were just talking about, when he asked Brenda Sweeney. Um, a while ago, you know, just respect the family, don't bring up Berkowitz anymore, that's impossible. We, we have to keep talking about Berkey. We just, there, there's no going around it.
Hey, it, it, it's a request, I don't blame him for making, I just don't know that it's necessary. I mean, I, I get it, and I'm not trying to be, you know, the man's not with us anymore, but. If, if what we believe is true, and then again, we don't know everything, he may not have been a great guy. Don't get the guy that everybody thought he was.
Uh, I mean, if, if we're going down the line of how long he was at Canton PD. And, and just some investigations that he was around. A, a couple investigations that we've covered, that people have come out to us and talked to us about, that not many people know about. It's like. He, he was behind in okaying all of this. Th- these were his guys.
Well, you know, you got, under his watch, three different people who, who are no longer with us. Uh, in Craig Casey, Sandra Birchmore, and John O'Keefe. There, there's, you know, the, I. I'm not making accusations, I'm just saying that, you know, things went array in all three of those. And we, we've seen it, we know it, and now you have one person who was, was deemed a suicide, now there's somebody arrested for the murder.
By the feds, not even by the county.
Oh, the county, the counties, they've, they've like doubled down, because they, they, they haven't gone and, and made any adjustments to anything, and everything's still the same.
Right, right. Oh yeah, even, it, just like people are now talking about Craig Casey, just the Craig Casey thing in general is. Messy, ma- like, I don't know how you don't see a body.
Well, and, and, and it, I don't know the story exactly, but I've heard it many times. The interaction that Chief Berkowitz had with. Members of the Casey family, there was some things there that just didn't make sense. Avoiding to, you know, and, and, and part of it was avoiding giving them information that they wanted. Instead, you know, he, he distracted them by taking them down to the scene, taking a ride with them.
Right, right. Yes, i- it's gross. Uh, we have a couple of new members. Uh, oh, Boston Brandy. She became a mod, and now she's happy.
Boozy, I don't understand why Brandy got punished, but with, with us. What'd she do?
We should have not been punishing the first place. We can finally talk our shit that he's not here.
Everybody's gonna be quiet when he comes back.
I know, no one, no one, no one's telling him we're talking about this. Um, and now we have another new member, Justin Noney.
Hey, John, how you doing, buddy?
You beat me home.
I did. And I, and I, and I was doing like 25 miles an hour out of, uh, down Washington Street, Kim.
Wait, really? Donna said boozy, Nan spoke highly of your investigation you have done and the info you have. Thank, that's so nice, thank you, Nan. Oh my god. Wait, that's so nice. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean. I, I, I speak about it all the time, but especially less on here, but more on TikTok, like. You know, the, the girls are the girls. We have such strong women in the movement. Um, because hello, it started as a free Karen Reed. Obviously, we've always been about justice for John O'Keefe, but. You know, the women really have rallied around the, the rest of us, so that's so sweet. Thank you so much.
That is very nice.
We do have a couple, um, of starred questions that I wanted to go over, just so we had something to chat about. So, what aren't they, are they not following the fraud, it's advice about, oh, oh, so are they? Are they gonna be following the proper procedure when it comes to Sean Good's investigation, is what essentially Macticles, I think, is saying? Um, because there are specific policies and procedures that they have to follow, which they clearly didn't do. When it came to like an internal investigation of Kevin Albert. Like, we, you know, I, I showed that paperwork. That's not normal. You don't, you don't do that. What do you guys think?
Well, there's a new sheriff in town. And his name's Chief Perkins.
I love that. Oh, I love that so much. Oh, here's a good point, okay. About Goody, hopefully he can't retire before they fire him. Uh, yeah, this is something I, I looked into, and. If you didn't see my tweet, you guys will like this. Sean Good, when, um, started on the force, December 10th, 2007. If you are under the age of 50, you need 20 years under your belt before you can retire and get pension. Guess how many years Sean Good is coming up against?
19.
He's just gonna hit 19 shortly.
John, don't talk with your mouth full.
So, um, yep, he's too young to retire. He, he, he's. It's like just, so he's like 18 going on 19, you know, he was so close. He was, he was just right there, just right there, and, um. He almost, that's called karma, Goody. He almost got away with it, almost. Now, hopefully what we can look for in the future, potentially, um, I'll go back to you, coffee girl. Um, hopefully, if there's other investigations that happen, those that have retired. Will have to pay back their pension and some fines because of potential criminal things. Which is, which is funny, because, um, that's something JR said specifically in his statement. Was that it's not a criminal matter, and then like me and a bunch of people in chat were like, yet.
Yet.
Yep, motherfucker. Wait, hold on, hold on, okay. Let's clear this up real quick.
Me and Mullins are a couple.
First of all, you wanna talk about like a murder-suicide, that would be John and I, like.
We can only, Boozy and I can only be around each other for short periods of time. Or on Zoom. Supervised. But no, me and Mullins are a couple.
And actually, actually, um, I spoke to Mullins earlier, I think John was in the chat with us. And, um, she was talking about going to places. I was like, I wanna go get the new wicked themed drinks. I need someone to go with me. And she's like, yes, let's go. And I'm like, cool, we're gonna go steal the broom and the mop bucket out of this restaurant. And be flying around singing, no one mourns the wicked.
The only problem is, is you pick chains. We don't like to go to chain restaurants.
We can go there so I can try the new cocktails, and then we can move, but I, I just need, I gotta.
We can go watch Eric Bowl. They serve beer and wine there.
Not Zima.
Uh, no, hi, Noons.
Thank you, thank you so much. Eric's cute too, don't forget Eric. Alright, okay, okay, we do the retirement.
For the record, me and Eric are not a couple either. I got a ring, I get, I'm all set.
I can't. We do love doing the Shakira, Shakira, although it was so much fun. Love her. Okay, who renews Charlie's contract? The select board? Yeah, right? Lovely. Um, does anyone know if Kevin Albert was friends with Matt Farwell?
Don't know.
Don't know, don't, oh my god, I was joking about this yesterday.
Hello. He's back.
We're gonna bring Lucky over here so John can eat in peace.
Much better. Sean, if you wanna, you know, put your flag up or something.
Well, everyone, um, welcome, welcome in everyone's favorite witness and, uh, plow driver.
Are you sure it's not the tow truck driver?
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry, Boozy.
No, honestly, that, that was probably one of the most viral moments. There, there was a couple. That, and, uh, you talking about the animals, uh, uh, it went pretty viral. Um, I, I had.
I gotta tell you this little tidbit, I sent John a text as he was driving through Canton. Cause he said he was hungry, he hadn't eaten anything. I told him, should have stopped at D and E and gotten a chicken pie.
Oh. Well, Chris wasn't there, so there would be no, you know, potential witness.
Exactly.
No, no. Um, Eric, you were there, were there any McCalberts there tonight?
Um, no.
No, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think I saw any. Which, did you guys notice they had a new angle for the camera?
It didn't, no. It's not really, I mean, the, the, the camera is mounted on, on the wall.
We've never seen that angle before.
What, what was the angle about?
It was up at an, like, up high corner, and then it was like on to, like, the people sitting.
Yeah, the camera's mounted up on, uh, high up on the wall, and they use a joystick to move it. Well, there's, there's, I think there's multiple cameras, though. Yeah, they, they may have just used a different camera, right?
Yeah. Um, Kimberly asked Lucky, how's Frankentruck?
Actually, it's very good. I was in it today.
You were in it today?
I was in it today. I almost, almost took a picture out the windshield to send to John.
You should have. So, so Frankentruck, do you keep that huge front plow on it year round, or do you take it off?
The plows off, all trucks are, plows are off. We keep the frames on it year round. But not the, um, not the plows.
And what else do you use Frankentruck for?
Uh, today it was used to, uh, haul, uh, three tons of asphalt.
Wow, no more trash, though, which is exciting.
Yes, it was great not having to deal with trash. Instead, I get to deal with diesel fuel.
Lucky, we have a, um, no, you're supposed to put soap in, you're not supposed to put the diesel fuel in the, in the bodies anymore, you're supposed to use soap.
Yeah, sure.
I know, I know. Hey, uh, Lucky, we have a, uh, we have, we have a new, uh, Sean Good song.
Oh, we do?
We do. You wanna hear it?
I would love to.
Go ahead, Booze.
Oh, I like that I'm running the show completely.
Well, cause my arms are crossed, I just didn't wanna touch the.
This is fun. Well, don't cross them too hard, you're gonna start sweating and then smelling sour. Okay, hold on, what is it? I think it's, and he goes, he's gonna kill me. Okay, alright.
I remember at one point during the evening, he came in, um, I don't remember if he came into the dispatch, or if I just saw him on one of the numerous monitors we have in dispatch. Um, I can't leave that room, because I'm the only one in the building on midnight, so, um, but. We don't talk or anything like that.
Sergeant Good, you're no fucking good, dude. Accountability for allowing me to use his body game footage.
Oh yes, I mean, like, 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 like I keep saying, that interaction, the unfortunate. Interaction that Mr. Mass Accountability had with Sean Good. But however, we got amazing footage, and we got to see how Sean Good really is. All the rumors, the rumors were true. About Goody. Wow, wow, goods gone bad.
Boy, I do them. Um, that one, the video isn't, uh. Isn't up to my standards, because two things, I rushed the video. And secondly, there wasn't a lot of footage of Good. There's a lot of footage of everybody else, but like I said, they minimized his, uh. His role in this, so all you got is some testimony and some back and forth with some people when he was behind the desk. So, yeah.
How many years has Lank, Lank worked?
Graduated with us in 90, went to college for four years.
I'd say he's probably been there 20 years plus.
You know what, um?
I don't think so. I think he's 15 to 18. He's the same as, uh, Good. Cause he would have gotten, he would have gotten out at 20. So they only have to work 20 years, and they get out with 70%.
Yeah, but isn't Lank older?
Yeah, he's my age, our age.
That's what I mean, I, I, I think he's got his 20 and no.
Good is 18, Good is eight years.
Lank started pretty, pretty early in his twenties.
Hold on, I can tell you.
I don't, I'm not 100% sure either, but.
I can tell you, I've got, um, an old paperwork, an old sheet. He, his date of start of employment, March 6th, 2000.
Also, he's, he's eligible to retire.
And actually, the reason why I, I know that, and then, um, Sean Good's start date. Because, um, there's a woman who lives in town, she's often in our chat, um, she's very vivacious, I love her so much. But she, um, FOIA requested a long, long time ago, just the complaints about the officers. And that just happens to include their, um, start of employment data at Canton PD, so. I saved that, and I was like, we're, we're gonna need to know that in the future, and lo and behold, two weeks later, Sean Goodie's info we needed, so. It's important. Alright, what are the latest rumblings about a search for a new chief? How many candidates has Chris been recused? No, unfortunately. Is interim chief helping yet more? Okay.
I don't think Chris is part of the process.
He can't, nor can my brother Mike. Well, actually, Mike can do that, but can't do the, um, DPW. Chris can't not be on anything to do with the police because of his brother.
Right, yeah. I, I've heard rumors that there's, there's eight candidates, roughly. I, I think, I think, I don't think people know what, what the intentions are of the current chief. Uh, it, it, I heard rumors he wasn't interested, I heard rumblings that he might be interested, who knows, maybe he's just keeping tight lipped.
So, I can tell you firsthand, uh, he has been offered the job and has refused the job.
Wow.
He is a substitute teacher only, and once they find a replacement, he will leave into the sunset.
Like, it's going on 25 years.
Yeah.
I literally just said that, did you ignore the date I said?
Confirming it with you. There's nothing wrong with confirming it with you.
My information's literally from a public request, like, record request.
He, he may have the. He may have the years on the job, but not the age to retire.
No, he's over 50.
Then he can retire.
Yeah.
He must be the writing, cause he might be running.
Well, he hasn't yet, so I mean, who knows? I mean.
And, and I'll, I'll just say it, you know, Resistance to Silence was when he was there live, Dana, with, um, some of the boots on the ground outside Canton PD. Um, they saw Lank pull out in his unmarked, uh, cruiser, whatever. And, um, he stared right at them and wasn't happy, flew right out of Canton PD, was, wasn't happy what was going on, so. It, it seems if the rumblings around town are correct, that there are multiple individuals right now that are stressed and or not happy, not feeling like they're in a, a good place anymore.
Um, I got a question right here. Who's, um, who, uh, these things go so fast. She never saw that part of the video of Berkowitz's potty. What part of the video? Are they talking about Higgins?
Probably. The, the, um, hide a dead body comment.
Yeah, that was when that, and, and I know the full story on that, and, um, basically, uh, Lena asked Canton Cable to cut that part out because Higgins was still doing undercover work. Um, and they bought the story. They didn't think anything of it at the time, so. Yeah.
Look, Sweeney, so Dennis was there. Dennis, Dennis and Brenda were both there, very close to the curb. Yeah, Dennis, he, I saw that on film, and I was like, oh, he's, he's pissed. And then when he was pulling back in, he just kinda was like, wow. And then Sherry D was like, Lank, Lank, who lives walking distance from Brian Albert's house? You mean, you mean Lank, Lank, who lives on the, the, the road that magically creates hills? And then they go flat again, and then they magically get hilly again, because remember, that's what they were saying about John O'Keefe's cell phone data? That's where he did three flights of stairs, was because the altitude was going up and down on that road? That, that's still to this day. There's a couple of things that grind my gears, that's one of them. And if you live on that street, if you know, you know, or if you plow that street. We walked that, when we were picking up trash, we walked that street. We, we, we picked up that trash.
Picked up those maggots.
Um, how come Goodie can recall seven monitors, but Deborah doesn't? Oh, oh. Oh, this, this is something that I wanted to go over. Um, I knew we would get to Canton PD, the internal goings of what's, um, like, what physically is happening inside Canton PD in regards to the layout. So, I briefly touched upon this yesterday. I'm gonna pull up a photo from Mass Accountability, because again, he had the unfortunate circumstance of having that one-on-one conversation with Good. Let me pull it up, this one. So, he had this interaction, what was it, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five? So, this was what dispatch looked like, middle of April this year. So just take a good gander at it. You can see Goodie is at dispatch in front of all those cameras. Mass Accountability is obviously in the lobby looking through what was at one point one-way glass, not anymore. They, they put the regular Plexi glass back up. And then Dana from Resistance to Silence, amazing, ended up going inside to show you guys what dispatch looks like now. So we have a couple of different frames. So this is one side. Do you see the difference?
Looks like a big cubicle.
Uh-huh. And then this is the other one. So this one would be like closest resemblance to the angle I just showed you guys of this one. You see that door back there? That's the one Brian Higgins walked through. So.
Hey, you know, it's, I, I don't think it looks bad, and, and at least you can see through, um, the window.
But you can't see the officers at all anymore.
No, but that's, that, is that the end of the world?
Yes.
Why?
No, it's not.
When you come, when you come to the, when you come to the desk, they have to get up from behind there and come to, come to the, the window in the desk and, and have a conversation.
Or.
Maybe anymore.
Or.
Well, they can't just blow you off. I mean, it is, it is a police station.
Or they could blow you off if it's someone like Good that's at dispatch, who obviously is not there anymore.
What, they're gonna blow you off for thirty extra seconds and then get up and hop and walk over, you know?
No, they're gonna pretend like you're not there.
So then you bang on the glass.
Well, then, then, then there's gonna be a video of, of, of a citizen standing at the, the window for fifteen minutes. And somebody's gonna FOIA request it and wonder why. Why, why, why aren't they getting any service?
So they can hide in their little cubbies. That's my point.
No.
Yes, they didn't, they, they, if they wanted to do, I can understand wanting to put up a little more protection. I get that. But the fact that they put up full-size cubicles, like, they didn't have to make them that frickin' high. They did.
Criticizing Chief Perkins.
Yes, because we have to, we have to keep holding them accountable. No one is perfect.
Don't die on me.
No one's perfect.
You know, if that's his flaw, I'm go, I'm gonna give him that one.
I, but, but we have to keep pointing it out. We, we know, although, otherwise, you let one thing go, and then everything starts to go to shit again.
You tell one lie, it leads to another. Then you tell two lies to cover another.
Just don't lie.
Church of Latter Day Saints, the Mormons.
Remember those commercials, Lucky?
I do.
So, yeah, I just wanted to put that up there. Um, why is Higgins wearing black sneakers when he had gray ones on? No, though.
Cameras.
It's, it's there. This, this, along with the fact that people are saying that that is Brian Albert.
Not Brian.
It's not. That's, you guys, you gotta watch how he waddles, and I don't mean to be mean.
Oh, like it.
You, you have to watch the gate. That, that, that's literally part of my career, is watching people how they walk, and I'm like, oh, Higgins. He's drunk or inebriated in some way, and.
Bad hips. Yeah. What? Oh, he's got bad hips. What happened?
What's the matter, Lucky?
Uh, the analyst just scored on the bronze. Now it's two, one.
Oh, I have.
I just scored.
I thought you was saying he has bad hips, too.
I didn't get that update.
Oh, you had that. You said he had bad hips. I'm like, Lucky, why do you have bad hips?
At least I know I'm gonna get some Bruins updates.
I got one, one, Lucky. Lucky, I got one, one with six minutes left.
Dude, with it. Thank you. I'm, hello, I'm watching it.
Two, one.
Self with the hips. Any Proctor updates?
Yeah, no.
Other than we're hearing that he's, uh, in.
Um.
Pleasant Street.
I, I, I have a, a brief update, but it's not, it's not anything like spectacular about Proctor. Um, I just got confirmation from someone around there that they haven't seen Proctor and Proctor's truck in quite some time.
I, you got that from me?
I did.
I got that from someone.
Stop by the, I stopped by the waterfall before I went to, uh, the select board meeting and ran into some, some citizens of Canton who, uh, frequent the establishments that, you know, a lot of people frequent in Canton. And they said that they haven't seen too much of Matt McCabe or anybody else lately where they normally hang out.
Um.
Kinda, kinda laying low.
Oh. Always. I, listen, if he's not gonna say it, I'm gonna say it, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I, and I will say, in the, in the past, usually it has been, um, like John just said, people that frequent places where certain individuals go or like the neighborhoods, what they normally see, if they see something that's different or out of character or missing. You know, it, word gets around, and we tend to be told things, specifically from ju- just from people that are in the watering holes or, or take walks in neighborhoods, so. I mean, shit, that's how I found out about Chloe. Like, neighbors talk, neighbors talk. And if you're gonna be mean and bully people in my TikTok comments, I'm gonna start saying where Chloe was.
Right.
Chat's gonna be like, where the fuck was Chloe? Where the fuck?
I wanna know where Chloe was.
Easton.
Uh-huh.
Who, who in that house of thirty-four Fairview had the ability to take the dog to another house that no one would know about?
In Easton?
Outside, outside of Canton, outside of Canton.
Caitlin and Tristan. Well, just Caitlin. I don't think Tristan, I don't think Tristan was ever anywhere.
Caitlin. Caitlin, Caitlin and Tristan had Chloe for a short amount of time, and there was a dog fight, cause she already had a dog. The dogs didn't get along, so they had to get rid of Chloe. That's it. That's, that's the story.
John, you texting your lawyer again?
Nope, nope, just double checking some stuff.
Oh my God, not at the VFW. No, um, no, May, they get a little buck wild at the VFW as someone who, who witnessed it on verdict day. Alright, we'll go on. Okay, good question. Welch's Emotional Support Laptop has amazing questions. You are just fulfilling my starred comments right now. Um, anyone filling out their retirement docs? Have we heard any rumors of anyone wanting to retire?
Nothing officially. I mean, I gotta think, you know, Lank, Lank was at thirty-four Fairview, so I gotta think he's gotta be thinking about retirement.
He's also there for the, uh, standard birch morn.
A hundred percent. He's, he's, he's been in Canton a long time. He's, he's, you know, and he's, and he's held rank for a while.
Well, uh, Canton was top-heavy with, uh, with all of the, uh, lieutenants and sergeants and, and deputy police chiefs, and now slowly it's, uh, getting back to more officers, so.
Well, and, and also too, like, how many more of the uppers are there left? I can, I can pull out my handy-dandy, uh, notes.
What's like, if Lank was to retire, do you see him working around his yard?
Yes.
He doesn't look like the type that is like Farmer Brown getting on his little Craftsman tractor.
You know what?
So these guys that, that retire, they go to, to the, uh, sheriff.
Yeah.
Pay a hundred and nine dollars.
Yep.
And they do details in the town of Canton under the sheriff.
Right.
That's how it's, Lena is doing it. It's how, uh, most of the, you know, Eric, um, not Eric, um, uh, uh, God, Donna, I forgot his name, Tiki.
You know, I know what I could see him doing. I could see him hanging out in his tiki bar. He's got this lit-up tiki bar in the backyard. I could see him just being out there a lot, not inside with the wife. He's gonna be out in the tiki bar.
I've heard he's been working on his investment properties to sell over the last couple of years, Colleen says.
Hmm.
Yep.
Hmm. Things that make you go hmm.
If we're going over the names of the officers that I have listed from twenty twenty-two, ju- just going over them briefly, Rafferty retired, Berkey retired, Kelleher retired, Cheryl is on her way out to retirement, right?
Yeah, from what I understand, as soon as a new chief comes in.
Okay. Uh, Gallagher retired, Lehan retired.
He's younger than us. He's not done yet.
Lehan is, uh, at the court.
Yeah, he's at the court.
Okay, uh, DJM Pietro can never say his name, retired.
He's retired, but doing details.
Yeah, doing details when he should have been friggin' arrested, but whatever.
John, you're harboring, you know, hard feelings.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing about Lanka is, he's not hurting for money. He's got rental properties over Brockton.
That's what, that's what Colleen just said, Jonathan.
Right, his wife's from Brockton. I played hockey with, uh, both her brothers, uh, in men's leagues for many years, so, um, yeah, he's fine.
Okay, um.
Like, I'm gonna listen to Colleen.
Silva C?
So, so VC.
So VC, is he still there? Yeah?
Ah, yeah, I believe he is.
Becker is still there. Uh, Good is now suspended. Anderson's still there. Taylor is still there. Albert's still there. Brady still there, right?
I don't know.
Michael Brady. Um, Theodore?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Theodore, yeah.
He's still there.
The father's home, yeah.
Pier, Pierrot is retired.
Yeah, retired.
Lank is still there. Coleman?
Horrible goalie.
Coleman?
Uh, Coleman.
Jason Coleman? I'm telling you, I have all the names. I told you guys. Charlie Ray.
Yeah, he's there.
Every time I say that name, I just think of Colleen O'Neal. Every.
Cause he lived, cause he lived back there.
Clown town. Um, yeah, and then the rest are all just patrolmen. So the other ones were ones that were like more uppers, lieutenant, sergeant, detective.
Don't quote me on this, but if, if, if my memory serves me right, when the Rays lived back there behind, you know, get around the bend down Walpole Terrace.
Uh-huh.
The problem didn't start with Mr. Ray. It started with Mrs. Ray.
Um, the mother, yes.
It started, it, it was a female, because, because, um, Jeff's place is not the, um, is not the best, easiest on the eyes, you know, for, for snow blowers and lawn mowers and stuff like that. And, you know, it, it's always the woman that wants to start stuff. The man just wants to be left alone, like, sweetie, don't say nothing. Please don't say anything. Now you get sucked into the fight. And, and what, you know, once you're in, you gotta, you gotta support your, you gotta support your spouse, and so that's how, I think that's how it all started. You know, and.
I don't think.
Go ahead.
I don't think Charles Ray is married. I think that was his mother that had the issue.
Oh, it was the mother. Um, so it was the girlfriend that he, that was in that house too? There was a younger woman that, yeah, girlfriend. That's what I meant. I didn't know if she, that he was married or girlfriend, but, um, and I remember when they did that houseover, they used to have to come down that driveway off of Walpole Street between the, uh, was that the Lally's house, I think? Um.
And Close.
Mr. Close, right. There was Mr. Close in the Lally's house with the chain link fence. And then they had this one tight little single driveway that, because these were cottages. These were tiny little cottages way back when, uh, you know, um, and they, they ended up doing a lot of work and fixing the back end of the house, and it was, it had nothing to do with the nine-one-one, which is what uh, Berkowitz and everybody led on to be, that when they went in front of, they did it the right way. They did go to town, to the select board, and then to town meeting, and had it changed, right? They had their address changed, but the problem i- it, they did it uh, with the wrong intentions. It was all just a money, it was a money move. They knew they were never gonna be able to sell the house and get the, the right money for it with the little driveway in the front, so that's why they, they fixed it up with the driveway in the back to make, to make their money back. That's all that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question for Lucky. Are you still driving snowplows? Us Aussies would like an update about this true hero.
Yes, I am. I am not driving, um, the Frankentruck as they have taken me off of that route. I am now in a skid stair doing the center of town.
You're, wait, you're in a what?
Wasn't Spanky or not? They took Spanky away from there?
No, Spanky's doing a different route on a sidewalk, so he's in a camo, which is a bigger skid stair.
Yeah, he used to come down my sidewalk.
Hold on, you, you are talking about a skid stain? What?
A skid stain? No, not a skid stain.
It's a skid stair. It is a, um, little version of a, um, a, um, it, it's, it's, it's a small little plow. It, it, you know, it fits just me. I get nothing, no radio, I got a little heat. Uh, but I just go into the center of town. That's it. I go from, I go from Bolivar Street to Walnut Street, and then I go Bolivar Street to the town, Town Hall, back up the other side to Walnut and come back down, and I just do that vicious circle.
That's an impressive route, though. Like, that's an important route.
Yes, it is. Yes. And I get to drive by D and E Pizza when he's in the. And I get to drive by D and E Pizza when he's in the, and wave to him.
We should pimp out your truck for you. So you, so you're a little more comfortable and give you all the snacks because we know you like snacks.
Oh, I don't. I just wanna go home.
No, we're gonna go, we're gonna go to Camp Nowhere.
No, for his truck for when he's snow plowing.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I do get.
Yeah, but we, you know, it's like, well, I can imagine. Listen, listen, I, I used to work in the bars and whatnot on the scene and, um, this, this, the truck drivers, the snowplow drivers would be very funny because the towny bars would always stay up for, or stay open for these guys. And they would just come in, just like eat, drink, have to go on the route, come back for some more snacks, go back on their route. It's just like all day, all night, in and out, in and out, depending on when the snow was, you know, going or stopped.
Boozy, what's that, what's that little icon right after Brandy's last name?
No, we already know. We already made, made fun of you for it.
No, thanks a lot. Okay.
Well, that's why, so Brandy, you said, that's what I mean. Like we, we could like pimp out, you know, and give him some things so we can have more fun while he's driving by D and E Pizza.
What is that little thing? It's a wrench.
Oh, it's a wrench. Like, like.
This is a moderator.
Yeah, I forgot. John, John missed our little conversation about the wrench.
Yes, I did. I missed a lot. I, you know, I was busy. I was busy trying to do real work.
I love the, the irony that you're in the high vis there, John.
Thank you.
It was a great touch.
I, 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 I had a, uh, I did have a, um, a vest that I was gonna take, I was gonna take the jacket off, put the vest on, but the, uh, the Sweeney's were taking too much room with their wheelchair and Peter kept knocking into me as he was editing his, his, uh, speech and, and Jack Carney tried to cut me in line. I had to give him a death stare, Jack. We, I was teasing.
He stepped up to the mic like a boss.
No, he's, he, he got up, he got up. I looked up at him and he goes, are you going to talk? I go, yeah, I'm gonna talk. He goes, okay.
You be nicer, Jack, okay? I literally told chat, he's one of my favorite humans. You be nice.
Oh, I am. Yeah. So, we're doing good, right? I, I, I mean, oh Jesus, it's only eight-thirty two, but, um, let's, let's get in, let's, let's at least give, give our, our members a li- let's just give our members a little taste of what's gonna be coming.
Go right ahead.
Alright, so we are going we're going to the Shorzy versus the Bruins alumni game on December seventh at three o'clock. That's a Sunday at three. And, uh, Boozy, myself and Eric have tickets. And we have one more ticket. So what we're gonna be doing is we're going to have a, uh, a contest that for members only. And one member, one lucky member is going to, uh, receive a ticket, a slice of pizza and a beer, okay? Yeah. And they're gonna be able to spend the afternoon with us uh, at the Garden cheering on either Shorzy's team or the, you know, the Bulldogs or the Bruins. Um, and the only thing you have to do, uh, th- there's no, you just have to be a member. And there's a couple of things that, uh, there'll be a, um, there'll be a, um, a post that you just have to enter, you know, put your name in, in the post so that we know who wants to be involved in this. And then we're gonna, we're gonna pick it, uh, the Sunday before Thanksgiving. So you have two weeks notice. And yeah, you, you, you're gonna come to the game with us and be crunk for the year.
And, and I, I touched base with, uh, RA's agent, uh, this morning.
Yeah.
And, uh, with, 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 it's just trying to work out the itinerary and hopefully get a meet and greet with some pictures with RA and, uh, if we can get that done, we're gonna, uh, there was no promises yet, but they're looking into what the itinerary is. So I have higher, high hopes for that.
Let's get a suite. Let's get a suite.
Okay, you got a ticket.
Listen, as someone who had the fortunate happenstance to go into one of those suites, the food and drinks are amazing.
They are, yeah.
They treat you well over there, yeah.
Listen, the, uh, listen, like I told John, we'll, we'll bring the person who wins out to lunch. She'll hang with us. We'll go, we'll go have fun, you know, we'll, we'll hang out. You get to hang out, you could see, as you see us is, is as we are in person, just so you know, probably even more lively in.
A little bit. You're gonna, you're gonna get to see me and Boozy like argue for like real.
John lose a lot of arguments for like real.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm not gonna leave, no, I'm not gonna leave her hanging, okay? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not listening to this.
Look, Alex wants a suite, same.
You pay for the suite. Well, how about this? You pay for the suite and we'll show up.
No, we have.
Alex, pay for the suite and we'll show up.
We have a connection. That's all I'm saying. We should be able to maybe get a connection. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Detective Mullins, you're eligible to win too, you know?
Oh, my God.
If you're a member, you're, you're eligible. If you're, you're, if you're a member, you're eligible. I, I, let me, uh, yes, I can repeat. I'll repeat it in a minute. Let me, uh, let me pull up the contest rules. It's, it's, it's defined print. I gotta pull up the fine print.
Well, you also didn't go into legality rules because there's certain rules with YouTube that you have to abide by. So you may want to be careful of what you post.
Yeah, I'm not posting it. I'm just gonna just go through it.
Okay, right, because they can dock the channel.
Exactly.
YouTube is not affiliated.
Right.
That you have to say.
Alright, so, uh, to qualify, you get three steps. Right? Subscribe, become a member. And once you're a member, you're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna create a post. And, um, you're gonna put a phrase in there. If you want, if you wanna be entered into the free, uh, drawing, I, I, you know, you gotta be careful with your words, right? Um, you wanna be in the free, it's a free drawing. Um, you're gonna, you're gonna put a comment. We'll, we'll be putting the comment up there for you to put in the comment. Um, and you end up getting your one ticket, uh, a pizza and a beer, uh, one drink and you get to sit with us.
One drink.
Yeah, that's it. And Eric, photos, laughs, some sarcastic chirps.
I'd have to vote him off the island.
Vote me off the island because the tickets are already in my phone, okay? So the island, you, you keep it up, Eric and.
No, 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 no. You said one drink. Okay, sir, you should have, you should have thought about, no.
Alright, we'll drive John off after one drink. One drink per period you get paid for. There you go.
He is such a gremlin. Oh, my God. You. You're cheap.
I'm not cheap. These are expensive tickets.
And how much did you get in memberships this? Oh, no, we're gonna fight. Oh, no.
We haven't gotten anything yet. You gotta wait till twenty second of next month.
Oh, my God.
That's the, but that, but that's the, um, public records request fund.
Right.
No, shush, shush, Eric. Mister, I drank a bottle, a bottle and a half in one frickin' life stream. Shush.
Well, you gotta stop going for four hours and twenty minutes. I mean, I, I had to pace myself.
See, this is why we need to talk about things beforehand because like now no one's gonna wanna go like, and they're gonna limit. Watch it, watch someone win that doesn't drink. Okay, think of John.
Good, there you go.
No, that's no.
Remember, we're, we're, we're using the final, final rules.
With that. At the game or here?
Wherever, the whole day.
Oh. No, maybe I'll buy him a pretzel. I'll give him a giant pretzels or a, uh,
There's Amy. I don't drink, so Boozy can have mine. Love you.
You wanna win, I'll buy you a giant pretzel or a hot dog or a giant Sabaro pizza or something like that.
They're already getting lunch on us.
Regina, they're getting the pizza Regina slice of pizza, twenty-two dollars, one slice.
No, we can.
And it's gotta be cat, no, there's no more cash at the garden, right? It's, I gotta put it on my card. So there you go. Uh, Mullins, it's not twelve bucks. It's like twenty-two dollars or sixteen dollars now would be a, and for, it's sixteen for like a, a, a keg beer.
It's cheaper, it's cheaper to go to the Capital Grill.
Yeah, it's cheaper to just have a couple of nips out on Carsway Street and then go into the game.
Well, that was part of the plan anyways, wasn't it?
It always is. Listen, they're getting, they're getting tickets and they're gonna get pictures with us. And, and, and that's that, okay? And you're gonna smile fuck them and you're gonna be good.
They're getting lunch. You don't be a cheap shitty.
Balcony's not forty dollars, not for that game. It was ninety-six bucks.
Don't you have to go like throw some laundry into the?
Yeah, like go.
Dryer or something.
Go get a Dixon, a Dixon Prixon.
I don't have any. I'm out.
See, so Mullins, that's what I'm trying to say. We can go to lunch beforehand. There's plenty of places around. As someone who.
There's a sausage vendor out there too. I'll buy you a sausage.
No, no, don't be cheap. No.
You can visit my daughter at the score.
There's so many.
Yeah, we could do that.
And tell him to relax.
Exactly, John. It's gonna be okay.
Right.
I said Dixon.
By then, just imagine how much news is gonna come out before that happens.
Really?
Oh, my God, what just? We can go relax. We'll have.
Just have a good time and watch a hockey game. Watching a hockey game.
We'll have some lunch and some drinks. We'll walk over, you know, and we'll have a good time. That's it.
Alright.
Listen, as someone who much prefers to go to games ver- versus watching them, like this is what I would do. This is what I always do. I go somewhere early and then I walk over to the game. You know, you don't really need to eat in there because they can get expensive. Oh, no, not hurricanes. Hurricanes isn't bad, but no. We could go to the greatest bar.
Oh, go to the fourth floor and see where, uh, where one of the Alberts was kicked out of.
It'll be close, but, um, no, they weren't, no, they weren't kicked out. It was. It was, no, they weren't kicked out.
Girls, the girls were asked to leave.
Girls, but not, not the son of someone who's underage.
Right. Mr. Mew, how to buy tickets? Just buy tickets. You could, it's, 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 the, the only, the only tickets left are all in the balcony right now. I'm just, just saying. So if you guys still want tickets, there, there are tickets available. Um, but, yeah. Yes, and he wore his helmet to the game, saw him in his helmet. Yeah.
I'm not gonna say it. I'm not gonna say it.
What?
Respect the children. Mm-hmm. Well, maybe if they didn't kick bunnies, I, I, I'd respect them more, but you know, let bygones be bygones.
Right.
They're not children anymore.
No, well, till twenty-three, I guess.
Okay, okay. Alright, we have a couple of starred questions. Let's get back to it. Do you think we can hope that there's messages on Proctor's phone indicating who killed John or might have been involved? Yeah.
Oh, I think anything's possible with those texts, anything.
Oh, yeah. And I, I would say, you know, the, uh, person that got these texts from the trial that's going on is about to walk away.
Brian Walsh?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not alone in that lucky, you know, even just people that don't, didn't follow even really the trial, that just are now following what's going on with the fallout of it all. Like, but the fact that Brian Walsh may actually walk because of all this is just.
His wife's pictures might be on other people's phones.
Yep.
Just saying, allegedly, allegedly, allegedly. I guess I have to say that to protect myself.
Well, you didn't name any names, did you?
No, I did. I did not name any of the state troopers.
But if you wanna name some of them, you could start with the allegedly.
Yeah, no.
Could Mass State Police still go to door-to-door in Fairview to figure out Ford Edge leads? Nope. It, that, that, they fucked up that investigation so much, like, no. And not only that, I think the only one that confirms that they saw the Ford Edge was Lucky. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anyone else testified. It wasn't in any other filings or motions.
No, I was the one that said it to the, uh, FBI when the, uh, state police asked me for the uh, interrogation that they gave me. Uh, I said it to them.
Yeah. Yeah. And like I said, I think you were the only one. I don't remember anyone else ever saying anything about it, like.
That, that is one of the, uh, fallouts from Chris Albert, you know, towards me. I, I threw his family under the bus by mentioning that I saw a Ford Edge.
Oh, oh, so maybe it was one of the family members. Oh, so he's confirming.
You know, you know who got thrown out of the bus by their own actions, Lucky?
Who was that?
Who did this? Who did it? Who did it? I'm not, no, I'm not digging. I'm not gonna kick any holes in the wall. Throw, throw a broom through it. This house is never getting finished.
And they're all bragging about it. And not one single one of those fuckers got fricking anything from it. They walked away from it.
Yeah. Mother. Chris, Chris told us, Chris told us in the library parking lot that the house, the homeowner was a friend of his.
Unbelievable.
Was a friend of his. And on top of that, none of these kids, you're right, none of these kids were punished uh, by, uh, by, by the parents, by, uh, uh, allegedly by the school, but you name it, by, by the town. Right? One of those kids that was at that party was Lang's kid. Just saying, right? Um, and, and yet, like I said, everybody has a price. The homeowner got paid back. Everything is good. Wipe your hands. Nothing to see here. Yeah.
If, if, you know, at the end of the day, if he was made whole, that's probably all he cared about. And, you know, he cared about, why does he want the backlash of fighting the system?
Right.
Yeah, but what, what happened to the daughter? You know, in regards to the, the, the friends? Cause she's, she was, was she a senior? Right, I think?
My, my guess is because they all went along with the plan, that, you know, everything was fine. As long as you go along with the plan, well, no problem.
Right.
I mean.
You're either with us or against us.
Right.
That's why, you know, they do the, um, lions and tigers and bears, oh my. That's why we can say that the bunnies and the ducks and the Chloes, oh my.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. 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 Mm-hmm. Yeah. Pulled that up real quick. I was not expecting. I was not expecting that. Um, is it confirmed? Confirmed, Lizzie left Proctor. No, until we hear from Lizzie or, or Michael. No, but word on the street from now, multiple people that hasn't been around. So.
It, it would be the smart move.
Right?
Yeah.
At this stage, it, it, the game's over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, from some. Someone that I spoke to that, uh, used to be very close to Courtney Proctor stated if it was true that Mike moved in with Courtney, that Mike essentially was Courtney's first baby, like in an, in a sense, and, um, well, I think we've seen publicly now that she'll do anything to protect him and protect his reputation. Um, now, this person did say.
I don't think his reputation is, I think.
But you also need to remember, they're still at the point where they think it was messed up that it's personal text messages. It's a personal issue and it shouldn't be affecting everyone's livelihoods like this. Like that is still their, their stance till this day. Till this day. And this, this is why if it's true that something happens with his mental health and maybe he is somewhere. like a mental health institution, they would blame all of us for the public pressure. Courtney, Courtney would blame us for all of this.
The, the union, the, the union didn't walk away because of us.
Correct.
No. Oh, God, no.
But do
That union ran.
Right, but do you, but, but do you think, knowing and seeing how the reactions have been from specifically Courtney Proctor, do you really think she's gonna hold him fully accountable? No, I have been told so many times, that is not how that family rolls. They are loyal to death and they will
I've been telling people that for three years. Canton is notoriously loyal. They're loyal to a fault, right? That's why they have a problem with people like me, Eric, that they look at us as betraying the town. For God dare we speak up, we should have just kept our head down, minded our own business and gone our way and let everything just kinda, you know, just kinda settle back in. And God forbid that, you know, if she, you know, she got found guilty, they would have been more than happy with that because then case closed.
Yeah.
Right. But they don't like the fact that we keep the attention on them. They want things to go back to normal.
That ship has sailed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if anything, you know, I feel like the, the domino has fallen, you know?
Look, 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 look who's here.
What? He got
Lucky's here. He's here twice now.
Wait, hold on. Oh, my God. Oh, my God, that confused me. I'm like
I think he signed in on a computer and his phone.
No, just my phone. I hit a button again. I got fat fingers. I hit buttons all the time and kicked myself out.
Kick him out of the other one.
Okay, we have a couple more starred things. Okay, I wanna see. Hi, hi to new members. This is crazy. You guys are amazing. Coco, welcome. She's, they, Coco's always in here too. And then, what the duck? What the duck?
See, John, with all these new members, we're gonna be able to get dessert.
That's what I mean.
All right, we go with the giant brownie. We'll go with the giant brownie. We can get, we can all share a giant brownie sundae at, at Friendly's.
Oh, hell, yeah.
Jim Dandy. We'll get the Jim Dandy. We'll, yeah.
Yeah.
This is PC's.
Oh, fuck yeah, Lucky. Yes, that's what I'm talking about. Hi, Maureen. What a cute puppy. Thank you for becoming a YouTube member. It's crazy. I love this. I love this.
Yeah.
Boozy.
Oh, you
I did want to, I did want to tell you, Boozy, you did a fantastic job.
When?
Beginning. At the very beginning, with, with no one to help you whatsoever.
It's, she's, we're, we're, Lucky, what, what we're doing without telling her we're doing it is we're slowly grooming her so that when
Grooming?
For her own show, so Come on, there's more than, dude, grooming my hair. Grooming can't only be one thing, okay?
Sounds like he's trying to kick you off the channel.
Okay, we're mentoring her and we are giving her time in the, time in the
I think she's mentoring us.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we're giving her the chance to, um, get her wings wet and, um, when she wants to take off and fly and start her own show on YouTube, uh, people will leave us and follow her. I mean, that's pretty much what, you know, what's gonna happen. So, yeah.
See, this is what I mean.
I've never seen so many people that are so triggered.
Bad, yes, because hello, hello, come on, come on.
I thought we pinky swear a little while back that Boozy was never leaving. I know, it's, I go to the barber and get groomed all the time.
No, no.
Yeah, I do.
There's other verbiage you can use.
Oh, what do you call, okay, what do you, what do you call the guy that gets married?
John, that's a noun, not a verb.
Okay, what?
Doesn't end in ing.
He literally just did this. Training, training is one.
Prepare someone for a particular purpose or activity. We're preparing you for your own YouTube show.
Come on, come on, can't say grooming. Come on, like, just, just take the L, it's fine. Just say, okay, I won't use the word
What are other synonyms of grooming? See what happens when he doesn't have his
Curry-ing. We're curry-ing her.
Curry?
That's better.
Yeah.
I like curry.
He had to go to AI. Tailoring, coaching, we're coaching her. How's that?
Coaching. If you, if you wanna know a good, uh, uh, curry place, lime leaf is delicious.
Different kind of curry. That's curry the seeds.
I like curry.
I think, I think Chris, I think Chris Albert was happy to see the Canton Chronicle there.
Imagine if he wins the, uh, imagine if he becomes a member and he wins the contest. What if
We are gonna, we are gonna need whichever member, uh, wins a, a, uh, emailed copy, front and back of an ID, so we, we know who is really behind the moniker.
Right, and then I, before I give up the seat, the, the seat selection, okay? Someone might be sitting
We're gonna do a full background check.
Yeah. I'm getting an aisle seat. I'm telling you that. I'm getting the aisle seat.
Thank you, Lucky, for being honest. That's sweet, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
That was nice. Oh, and then, um, I like this comment. Emily D Baker, she's one of my go-tos. She has been for years, by the way. I, I love Emily D Baker. She's an attorney on YouTube. If you don't know, I feel like most of you probably know who Emily is. Um, Emily D Baker stated Liz Proctor left Mikey so that they're, they can't get the dome. Well, that also may at some point, like save the house and stuff, because there's like laws and whatnot about
You gotta assume that's in, they homesteaded that.
That, you know what? You can find that out Norfolk County Registry of Deeds.
Yeah, sure. If they didn't, then that's kinda stupid. Right.
Yeah, that paperwork would be on the, um, deeds though, and
Yeah, 100%, absolutely.
But if it's a divorce, that the house would go to the wife with the kids.
Well, you would.
Not necessarily. They can force a sale.
Massachusetts is fair and equitable.
Yep. Definitely force a sale.
Right.
Fair and equitable.
Yes, fair and equitable. It's not 50/50. It could be 60/40, but for the most part, Massachusetts is fair and equitable. They put all your money, they put all your bills in one part, they put all your assets in another, they, and then they, they just kinda split them evenly.
You know what? Someone just said on, um,
No, you gotta tell us.
On Twitter, John, it's actually something nice about you too.
Okay.
Oh, he goes, okay, are you listening?
No.
Danielle, at Jazza Diaz, I love Danielle, says, I have been meaning to say this for months. Johnny, you listening?
She's been meaning to say this for months. Johnny, you listening?
Dot, dot, dot.
Dot, dot, dot.
One of the best things about this community for me is Boozy and John's friendship. It makes me so happy.
Oh, yeah, well.
Say that one time.
You're not around all the time. Whatever her name is. She doesn't see the ups and downs. Um, uh, Queen of Hearts, I groomed about an hour and a half ago. I just, my hair started
No, you don't just, no, you, you gotta be nice. You take a compliment.
Being nice. I'm being nice.
You said you're gonna work on that. Eric, hold him accountable.
I'm working on it. I, how many times do I say I appreciate you when we sign off?
Never.
He's demeaning to say it.
After we sign off and he tells
Right before I click on that X, I go, hey, guys, and he goes, you, I go, I appreciate you.
You hung up on me the other day. You hung up on me the other day.
That was an accident. And I called you immediately to tell you it was an accident. I went to close one of the windows and I closed both windows and I was like, oh no, I can't get back to the, the studio now.
If you guys don't know, John has a thing. Why are we losing?
Yes, they just scored.
I, I like how Lucky's keeping us up to date by going
It's a little animated.
People like their sports. It's okay. I think that was pretty tame.
I, I sat next to Whitey the other night, uh, watching the Bruins game, I mean, the, uh, Patriots game. And we were, we were at, um, the lodge watching the game and the place is packed. And everybody can hear Whitey yelling at the TV and yelling, yelling at and, and Drake May, what are you doing? You can't be dropping the ball. I'm like, he's screaming it at the top of his lungs.
Oh, hey, do you know what Jenny said? Jenny, no pockets?
She found sweatpants with no pockets.
No, she said, it's so organic and authentic. I love it too. And they are the same in person, which is the best part. It's not forced, it's genuine. High five.
I am a genuine person.
I like it.
Somebody's gotta tune in with us all doing this.
Hey, Macarena. And it goes dum, da, dum, 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 Macarena, dum, da, dum, 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 Macarena, dum, da, dum, 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 Macarena, hey, Macarena.
Keeping quiet so I know where to cut it. I, I don't have anything to apologize for, Sherry. I'm gonna buy, Jenny, if you win, you have to wear sweatpants with no pockets.
No.
Yeah.
She won't, she won't need any pockets.
Why is there an asterisk at the end of her name?
Cause she just likes it. What's the matter?
Who has an asterisk as, as, that's not even a letter.
Are you seriously gonna keep picking on Jen? I'm actually gonna pop off.
It wasn't even a letter. It's like an asterisk. Like, how do you pronounce that? Jenny Cochran asterisk.
You're gonna stop problems, John.
No, get rid of that asterisk. When I watched the Bruins, when my daughter was little, she'd be asleep in her crib and I'd be yelling at you, uh, we weren't allowed TV, uh, during the school week. And, um, I had to watch the Bruins. And so we had this TV. It was, it was the size of like a, it was the size of like a toaster oven, right? The screen was only like this big. You remember Eric?
John, you're not even paying attention.
Eric, you remember the, the TV screens that were like, like this big friggin' thing was, was the si, you know, the size of your computer, you know, at home computer.
John, I'm old enough to have had just a black and white TV.
Yeah. And, um, so
Without the remote control, Eric.
Yeah, absolutely. There was no, there was no, uh, remote start that, that set a timer to go to sleep. You actually had to get up and turn the TV off and then go back to bed.
Right. So I'd, uh, so I, I'd be like upstairs and, and watching the Bruins with no volume on and God forbid, my mother would hear me moving around up there. She'd come up and find the TV and take it away. Oh, it was horrible. Listen to it on the, now Jenny O has an asterisk. Okay. I gotta, I gotta, one of the rules is if you have an asterisk in your name, you're not gonna win.
The host has muted me.
No, you didn't.
Oh, my God. Oh, this is great. This is great. Oh, man. You know, people are gonna start tuning out because I laugh so obnoxiously. I'm sorry, guys. Someone, someone did leave a comment being like, Boozy's laugh is so obnoxious. How do you think I feel? I've lived with my entire life. Thanks.
Yeah, but it sounds different to you.
Well, you know, I feel like whenever you like record yourself or like on a voicemail or something, you hear back and it's like, oh, I sound like that.
Oh, every time I go, oh, that's terrible.
Oh, my God. Someone said, hello, asterisk. So, uh, clearly, uh, chat is, is on Jenny's side. The only one that's not, oh, my God, did you shut the fuck up, John?
He's a four-star asterisk.
It's not a trend. Don't get used to it. There's a new rule. In order to be part of the, the, the contest to come with us for the day, you have to have an asterisk.
Jenny's not even a member, but I think she should win.
No, she's not even a member.
She's a trendsetter, though.
Yes.
Those softball girls are such cheap.
Ooh.
What? 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 What happened?
Boozy's gonna kick your ass.
I mentioned softball.
Kick your ass. Boozy's gonna kick
Yeah, go ahead, Jack. Go ahead, Jack.
Boozy's gonna kick your ass.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Nope.
Notice how he muted me for like point second, like one second. He goes, I can't do this any longer. She's gonna yell at me.
My gosh. It is tough when you don't have a little good base on dealing with you people. Oh, my God.
I see a rag on you when you're
May, the worst was when, when my father was watching TV, he asked us to go move the rabbit ears. And we'd move him and he's like, that's it, don't move. Move them, just like that. And then like you, you'd take your hand off and the, no, no, put your hand back on the ears.
Before you know it, you're getting tinfoil for the
You're supposed to just, yeah, you're supposed to, you're supposed to just sit there and the whole, one of the rabbit ears while he, so he could watch Bonanza or something. F Troop.
I'm missing my F Troop.
Chat is just trolling John now, like
Listen, I can hide this.
You better not. Oh, he put it on the screen. Oh, I can hide it. Puts it on the screen.
So, did you get, did you get through all your, um, did you get through all of your videos?
Um, oh, we just had one more, um, little Colin and Friends destroyed the million, yeah, yes. Um, did I get through all my media assets? S, 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 assets? What's this? Yep. Oh, well, we didn't go over Coxey the other day.
It's up to you.
We kept, we kept getting, um, clearly, um, distracted by everything.
I don't know what you mean by that, Boozy.
Michael Cox?
No, being, you know, distracted.
You better, you better fucking not, John.
You know he's wearing it.
He's literally looking around like this. Where's my Timu jersey? Where are the jerseys?
John, just
He is, oh my
Make sure before December 7th, that shirt gets, gets washed and dried.
This one?
Yeah, we don't need that, you know. We're gonna have to sit pretty close.
I know. I'll put deodorant on that day.
Yeah, break real deodorant, please.
Yeah.
I'm in hammer. Sure.
Okay, okay, okay. So we'll go over the, the Michael Coxit, Coxix of it all. Okay. So, 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 so. You're joking. He's gonna, he's going to go put on a frickin' jersey. He's, he's going to go put on a jersey. I fucking knew it. I goddamn knew it. Where are the medals? Where's the medals?
They're over there.
Put them on too. You get, you are the star center. That is a brand new jersey we have never seen before. Go on, let's make it another
Barely fits, but it used to fit. This is a nice one. This is, this is, this is a new team. This is, this is a real, right, yeah, Adidas and it's a, it's, it's a real Michigan hockey shirt.
Patches, little patches.
I look at you. How many jerseys do you have?
You have a whole room full.
Oh, my God.
You have a whole room full.
Everyone's like, Michigan, 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 Michigan?
Absolutely.
Oh, God, he's gonna have more. He's gonna have more. I can't, how do I minimize him?
I don't know. Go ahead, I'll write back.
Oh, Lucky got booted. Okay.
No, my, my hand slipped and I hit the stupid button to leave the studio. I'm watching the stupid game and I
Will.
Hand slipped.
If you guys weren't here the other night, like, I think John put on five different jerseys.
No, one, two, three.
Oh, my God.
Four. Yeah.
It was at one point where he had one on and then he left for a split second and came back and it was the same exact jersey, just a different color. Like, if you weren't
It was a different jersey. There's two of them.
No, it was the same M, but it was just a different color.
Yeah, if they have home and away shirts when we go, when, cause when you Yeah, if they have home and away shirts when we go, when, cause when you play a team, like there's whites and darks.
Yeah, but if no one was paying it, oh, God, here we fucking go. But if no one was paying attention, everyone would have been like, oh, he's just wearing the same. No.
So when my dad died, this is my dad's right here. So my dad died. Move this down a little bit. We had a hockey game and so we had, I had shirts made. There you go. Game, pick that game.
Death shirt.
We can, we can.
Yeah. I'll leave this one on.
John, John prefers to play sports shirts and skins though.
The fucking asterisks are killing me because they're still going in the chat.
I wanna know how many people had to go look for it. All right, what letter is that over? It's here somewhere on my keyboard.
Literally can't.
Why do I keep getting an eight come up?
For an eight?
Yeah, if you don't hit the shift button, you're gonna get an eight.
Yep, Joe. Oh, my God, he was awesome.
Boozy's going to look.
I know. I was like, I wanna, I wanna press something and then pop up the whole screen. Like my thing.
See, Jermaine knows my dad.
You already put that up.
I know, and I took it down too. I can, I can do whatever I want. Watch, I'll put it back up. You know why? Because she doesn't have any asterisks. Yeah.
Look, but Jenny still loves you.
Yeah, I like her. She's all right. I like her stuff. I, I, I check off the box. I like her stuff when she posts.
She was one of the people that protected me when I got a little, right, to get run over. So like.
She ran right up there. We should go again.
No, I'm not ever going back there ever.
Jenny, Jenny, you wanna come with the Kronks to the Tahiti?
I'm not going back to Tahiti. I'm not.
What do you mean you're not going back to the Tahiti?
Nope.
Tahiti's awesome. We had fun there.
I went with my sister.
Eric, you weren't there the second time.
No, I wasn't there the second time. I heard all about it.
Yeah.
Eric, my sister came into town. Three hundred and, it was, yeah, it was like three hundred and something dollars, three.
At the Tahiti?
Yeah, we had a good time.
You didn't eat that much either, did you?
Well, we had a poo poo platter.
There's forty bucks.
Yeah.
All I want is crab rangoons. I'm like the, the freaking easiest. When you bring me to the, any kind of Chinese.
Real food. That's not even real crab.
I don't care.
Doesn't matter what they call it. It tastes delicious.
DJ, DJ, you can definitely come with us to the.
No, but how about we try out different, like Chinese American places?
No, because that place is.
I have a great Chinese restaurant. That's a all you can eat buffet.
Oh, there's one down Rhode Island. Oh, it's huge.
Right down the street from me, less than a half a mile.
Which one?
Let me see.
Lucky, don't be giving out your address. Lucky, don't be giving out your address on, on.
No, no, which one do you go to Lucky? Cause there's one, I think we were talking about the same one. It's enormous.
Uh, this isn't enormous. It is.
Yeah.
I, listen, I fuck with the buffet. Okay, we, we'll go buffet. Unlimited crab rangoons, unlimited crab rangoons. Sign me up. Done.
Yeah, your maxed out at like four or five.
Have you seen, I, no, 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 no. We got an entire large crab rangoons and I ate every single one. Every single one.
Yeah, we, John and I were afraid to go even near them.
Yeah, no, I'm like.
Oh, it might lose a finger.
Yes, I'm feral. I only had what? Two Coronas? And I was like, I just want crab rangoons. That's all I want. You don't mess with my crab rangoons or my chicken parm.
John's like, I'm gonna stay over here with the boneless spare ribs.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I'm a chicken finger guy.
I don't like the, the Chinese American ones. I like the regular, like classic fried chicken tenders. I do like, um, what's the meat on a stick? I like those.
That's teriyaki.
Yeah, I like those. Like those.
Those are good.
Yeah. And I like pork fried rice.
Oh, that's where it was. It's hibachi. It's the hibachi supreme buffet.
Boneless spare ribs. There used to be a really good one, but they're, they closed. Um. Oh, wait. Eric, Eric, did you ever go to the Chinese food buffet in Quincy?
The Cathay Pacific?
No, no, it wa- it, it's now one of the dealerships. It used to be over by Maria's.
My Maria.
Oh, it's one of the old Quirk dealerships?
Yeah.
Look at how many stations they have.
The one that's, um, down. And it's, you have to go like down a little hill. And it was, it was at like the, the, I like how we're getting completely ignored.
Wait, listen, just you and me then.
Yeah, this, I'm gonna Google it because it was great. My grandmother used to take me all the time and I think it cost us like, maybe twenty bucks for her and three kids to eat unlimited at like four o'clock on a random Wednesday. So good.
Now, now we're sho- now we're showing the Kronks Chinese food.
It's a huge buffet. Yo, what's the name of the place again? Uh, it, it's called the, what's it called? It's the Hibachi Grill Supreme Buffet. They even have American food there too. Like they have other stuff too. But they even have like.
Are you gonna go to a hibachi place and have the American food?
I have. You know?
Lucky, you wanna chime in there?
I'm, I'm just laughing that he goes to a hibachi and orders American food. Why you just go to an American restaurant?
You get everything. You can have both. You don't just, like, look, there, there's chicken nuggets. There's tons of things that you can have. You know? It's good. Just saying.
Okay, Eric, I think it's where Quirk Chevrolet is now. Um, right across from the dunks. Technically it's Quincy Ave, but it's like Quincy Braintree. And I remember it was like a big strip mall.
Yeah, he's got a bunch of dealers in there, but, uh.
Oh, sorry.
And it's, and it's corporate office, I believe.
Yeah, so that used to be before they demoed that building. It was a strip mall and there was a huge, huge Chinese buffet in there. But it, again, they would have everything. They have prime rib. They would have lobster sometimes. Like it was just, oh. I miss it. I miss, you people are terrible from my waistline. You're welcome.
Oh, Chengdu. Hey, Chengdu is still in Stoughton. It's now called Mingdu. Ming, Ming owns it. Um, very nice woman. Um, and it's still pretty good. They also have Coy down in Attleboro. Uh, Mingdu and Coy, uh, uh, sister places. Coy is a, is a big. Yeah.
Sorry.
How's the duck boat coming there, Booze?
Shut up. I have, when I, when I have time? For real? When do I have time?
Uh, when we're not on.
No, okay, you act like I just have all the most free time. I don't do anything with my life.
I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out.
Boozy, just make sure when you do have time.
Yeah.
It's a pink duck boat.
Oh, my God. Oh, my.
With yellow pinstripes.
Eric, I would like to try that soup pot thing, whatever the heat pot, hot pot.
The hot, the hot pot over in Quincy?
Yeah, that's good.
Typically, typically after bowling, my wife and I will head over there on a Friday night. It's nice.
Yeah.
For sushi though.
Right.
Oh, I don't.
Wow, they got a lot over there.
Bruins just scored. Woo hoo.
The Bruins, the Bruins just scored?
Wait.
I feel like I missed a goal.
What about, what about Cathay in, um, North Weymouth? Right over the bridge.
Yeah, that place is good too.
I like Cathay.
Hey, Boozy. You got off track again.
Yeah, I know. Cause the fucking boys of typical. Always. Always.
John, you were, John, you were sitting at Peter today. Did he, did he mention anything to you?
He, he ca- he called me today and that's how I answered the phone. I'm like, woo hoo.
Oh, that's great. Did he see it or, or, or was he already asleep?
Uh, no, I don't think, I didn't ask him. I don't think he saw it.
Oh, cause I thought he called you because of that.
No, no, he was just calling to see if I was gonna be in Canton tonight.
Gotcha, gotcha.
You know?
Richie said, now we made him hungry.
Richie, better than talking about, uh, pop culture, uh, nineties movies.
That got the, no, that got the chat lit. I don't care what anyone says. Our chat was just like, phew, phew, phew.
Just for the record, John, again, it was the two thousand, not nineteen ninety. He's too young.
Right. Right. Dude, I looked it up. There really wasn't any good. You know? Superman, uh, Clark and, uh, Lois. Two thousands top sitcom.
I, um, I didn't see this. Lucky, did you see this? How do you like loophole lawyer? He's wicked funny. Depiction of you lifting weights. I have never seen that.
I haven't seen that.
I haven't seen that either.
We're gonna have John Google that.
John, you need to look this up.
I'm looking at Javi the Birdman.
Who cares about Javi the Birdman?
Yep.
Look at the, look at the comments there.
Go look at my video about me, John.
Come on, damn it.
What's a search? What do you want me to search? Wait a minute, I'm supposed to be the host. You're supposed to be searching. Um, how do you like loophole lawyer depiction of you lifting weights at Lucky? Okay, let's see. Lucky lifting weights loophole lawyer. Let's see if that comes up. No. Train like a lawyer, the weightlifting lawyer. Uh, no. Who is Vince, the loophole lawyer?
Written dreams. If you know exactly which video it is, we would be very grateful if you knew.
Who is the lawyer known as Mr. Loophole?
Told us to nag you to do a collab on, fuck, yes, I would do that in a heartbeat, Jermaine.
What's that? Who's that?
Um, Obi?
Is she on there now?
Oh, no. So, um, this is Jermaine Obuzi. Obi, Obi told us to nag you to do a collab on nineties reality shows. I will do all the reality shows. Cause like, that's what I do. That's, that's literally all I know. I don't watch scripted television. I.
This is why Boozy's too busy to get the pink duck boat.
I have to catch my housewives.
And, and she, she led on with this Michael Cox thing and then she's totally off of it now. I, I'm just not gonna, you know, my night is ruined.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, we got something good. What do we got?
Yeah.
Breaking news? We got breaking news.
Or did you find the video?
No, somebody sent me something that I, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Now I just gotta.
You gotta run by your lawyer first?
Nope, no, 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 no. We're good. You guys keep talking and I'll.
You download it?
Yep.
Oh, it's a visual.
I actually was just looking at some Chinese food to Uber Eats and, um, every place is closed because I didn't realize it's nine thirty on a Tuesday. I just want crab rangoons now. I want them so bad. Stop, I love them. The last time I had them. I didn't, no, yeah, I didn't even eat the, the second time I went to Tahiti because I was so flustered with, with the whole, getting threatened to be run over. So, yeah, the last time was the time before that.
You weren't flustered. You were ready to throw down.
I, I was, I, that's what I mean.
John told me he had to hold you back.
I can't throw bows. And be having crab rangoons all over me.
All right, let's go.
I was ready to go on TikTok live and see, let's see what's happening. John's like, don't. Don't you dare.
All right, let's see if that, oh, good, it's coming.
Oh.
Let's watch Higgy, Higgy baby. Uh, at, um, at Lanka's promotion. Let's see. All right, hopefully we have sound.
Tuesday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM. And just for the record.
Can you hear that?
Yeah. Yep.
No, barely. You gotta turn it up.
No, it's as loud as it is.
Full screen?
First thought of business chairman is the appointments of deputy chiefs, lieutenants and sergeant and I defer to our chief, Lena Rappi.
Um, we're gonna be doing sergeant in September. Okay, deputy chiefs and lieutenant tonight. So, good evening, everyone. This is a very special night for the officers being promoted, the Canton police, personnel and the community overall. Before we begin, I'd like to extend my gratitude to a few people present here tonight. Town clerk Tracy Kenny for always being so accommodating and giving the oath of office to each new officer who comes aboard, or to each promotee as they take on their new responsibilities. Town administrator Charlie Aston Mall and human resource director Jody Middleton for participating in the interview panel for deputy chief. I know how busy you guys are and your gift of time is sincerely appreciated. And last but not least to the board, I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude and thanks for your support in getting us to this point tonight. In these contemporary times, the challenge of leadership, especially in law enforcement, is to be strong, but not rude. Be kind, but not weak. Be bold, but not bully. Be thoughtful, but not lazy. Be humble, but not timid. Be proud, but not arrogant. And to have humor without folly. Successful leadership today is influence, not necessarily authority. Bill Gates has said, as we look ahead into the next century, leaders will be those who empower others. The three people we are promoting tonight meet the criteria described above. And I can confidently say that with these choices, we are fortifying a strong foundation for those offices coming up behind them. So without further ado, we're gonna start with, right now Detective Sergeant Lang in about thirty seconds. Lieutenant Lang. Come on up, Mike. Lieutenant Michael Lang came on to the department in nineteen ninety-eight as permanent intermittent. And in March of two thousand, he joined our ranks full time. He's a lifelong resident of Canton, graduating Canton High in nineteen ninety. He graduated Westfield State College in ninety-four with a degree in criminal justice. He is the younger of two sons born to Carol, who is here tonight, Mrs. Lang. And John, a Milton police officer for thirty-five years. No doubt, your father is beaming down right now, Mike, as he watches this trans.
Not now.
Mike became a detective in two thousand and eleven and a sergeant in two thousand and thirteen. In September of twenty twenty-one, he replaced Lieutenant Gallagher as Detective Sergeant for Canton PD. He is an astute investigator who leads by example and models the level of commitment he expects those he supervises to perform at. Lieutenant Lang will be a great addition to the command staff and I embrace the many new ideas I'm sure he will propose. Lieutenant Lang will take his oath and then be pinned by his wonderful wife Trish, who will be accompanied by their children Dylan and Skylar. All right.
Please raise your hand and respond to the following question. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, as well as the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaw of the town of Canton, and the rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and all lawful directives, written and unwritten, of the Canton Police Department? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of lieutenant for the Canton Police Department to which you have been appointed, according to the law and to the best of your ability?
I do.
There's Higgins.
We have to make, we have to make a motion to appoint him for. I could do a motion reverse kinda, right?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
On the next one, we'll just do the next one. Michael, good job. But I just gotta make a quick motion. I gotta make a quick motion. I gotta make a motion. On the next one, so I'm gonna do it right now. Just to make it official. Yeah.
Now, why, why, why is it?
Yeah, don't go anywhere yet. We have to make this official. I moved at the board appoint Mike Lang to lieutenant of the Canton Police Department.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion, comments, questions, hearing that all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both five zero. Congratulations. Now it's official.
So again, why is Higgins there?
Seven twenty-six twenty-two. When did Berkey retire? June? Twenty twenty-two?
John, where's Higgins?
Right. Well, I tried to say it, but somebody muted me. He's right behind Helena.
Ah, yeah. In the black shirt.
The black shirt. Right? You see Tommy and Patty Patty Cheryl over there on the left. Uh.
Yeah, but why, why would, why would he show up to that?
Exactly. Why is he there?
Well, that's that's why I'm asking. When was? I'm pretty sure it was June twenty twenty-two was Berkey's retirement party. Like I'm, I'm almost positive.
And this was July, right?
It was all really around the same time. Oh, what a nice bridge.
Yeah. And then you go back to us. There you go.
I like this one. Bullshit at its best, asterisk, asterisk, asterisk.
Mm-hmm.
Do solemnly swear to protect the protect the Albert family from this day forward.
I know.
Black is slimming. Um, I hope chat is excited that I am ordering Chinese food.
Are you really?
Yes. I'm hungry and now I want crab rangoons. It's literally all I want. Do I order a double order of crab rangoons?
No, you don't need to. We know what's going on, all right? You don't need to.
I just.
You think you need to because of the your conditions, but you know. You know. Boozy's going through some um.
Okay, be quiet.
Some conditions.
Quiet, be quiet. Oh, jalapeno poppers. Yeah. Yeah. Um, no, that's that's interesting. I don't know why. Why would Higgy Piggy be there? I I think that's something we need to discuss cuz that he wasn't a part of um, Canton PD.
Right.
Jesus Christ, I can't get away from it.
Uh, did you read it?
Canton Chronicle.
Yeah. I got it. Now I got away from Eric. He's gonna love it.
What happened?
Look.
Oh, look at that.
Huh?
Boozy, see that?
I saw it. I saw it. I can't say.
Now we know how to shut her off.
Been about eight people in there.
Yeah. And a driver.
No, no.
Eight to twenty.
Maybe we get two.
No, what? Jesus Christ. You know what? If if we can get a suite for RA, maybe.
We're not getting a suite. You get one ticket.
Does who?
John already bought the tickets.
I already bought the ticket.
So, but what if we get a suite instead?
How?
We're gonna, we're gonna. Sounds like, sounds like Boozy knows people.
We're gonna get the suite and give
He knows a guy.
And we can just wave to them from the suite.
Eric, no, you bring them into the suite.
What suite? Then what are we doing with the tickets?
I'll be lucky to get that photo up.
Lucky, you need a tripod cuz you know, I'm not even drinking.
I need a computer. This phone is sucks.
Come out of Lucky.
We'll talk to, we'll talk to management on that.
Turn turn it horizontal. Might be better.
Yeah.
Spin it.
No.
Oh, he's got it locked.
Oh, yeah.
If I touch a button, I'm gonna get kicked off the thing. No, it's just I'll deal with it.
Stay right there.
Well, we're we're about to hit. We got, we got six minutes left anyways. Three minutes. It'll be three hours. So.
Yeah, three hours of nothing, except for the first, except for the first thirty minutes.
Right.
Boozy.
That way I can go back and watch the first half hour of the show, see how it went.
She did really good job, John.
I'm sure she did. Sure she did. I had faith in her.
Two rolls.
I had faith in her. I li- I I left her alone. I I
John would never leave me alone like.
Barely checked in.
I wouldn't wanna be left alone like that.
I didn't even check in this week cuz I knew she did last week. Yeah, she's fine.
To be to be fair, that's because you've seen me in action on on TikTok all those times. So you know what I'm capable of. You know I can handle it.
I know you can. You're
Well, he's trying to mentor you into that next step, that next level.
The next, the the, you know, you know, use the booze tube.
So Boozy, he's he's gearing you up from when he retires.
Right.
Oh, no, here we go again.
No, I'm, I didn't say it.
John retires like once a week.
No, right.
And 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 if he doesn't retire, he just full out quits.
Dennis, so am I.
Dennis, I'm everybody's wrenches off.
Um, I did it one time, one time. You guys were being such menches.
Oh, it was our fault.
Shots fired. Oh, I knew this show would come alive.
Oh, my God.
Hmm.
Well, this is
All right. Well, I guess that's it, guys.
See, cutting it short.
Four minutes to go.
All right. Well, do you know what? Well, okay, this is, this has been a moment. It's been a moment. Fuck it. I'm just gonna play it and you're all gonna shut up. You're just gonna shut it.
You were asked to go to the Commissioner's office, correct?
Yes.
How long had you been on the Boston Police Department at the time that you were invited to go up to Commissioner Michael Cox's office?
It had to have been before the first trial, and I know it was when the agency released information to outside people.
I have nothing to do with Karen Reed. Matter of fact, I didn't even know this person was associated with the Karen Reed case. I have no idea what they're talking about with Karen Reed. Had nothing to do with Karen Reed, no discussion.
Did you tell Officer Dever to do the right thing?
I didn't know she was even associated with that case. So, you know, I don't know. I I was struck like, what do I have to do with the Karen Reed race? I had never have said those words together. I have nothing to do with Karen Reed. I was in the state of Michigan.
Here is what the commissioner had to say that you won't hear on any other station.
But what I need, you know, it's not to be asked this question ever again because it's not, has anything to do with the police department. My condolences to the O'Keefe family for, you know, what they've gone through. Uh, and because we did lose a department member, but outside of that, this has nothing to do with us, and I'm not gonna speak on this again.
Boozy.
If you have thoughts, comments, or concerns for someone that doesn't wanna answer your questions, police dot commissioner at Boston dot gov.
But Boozy sounded like he was telling the truth.
Mm-hmm.
Totes, totes of goats. He's just, he's just such a good, honest top cop.
Somebody, somebody give him a rag so he can wipe his forehead.
It's just.
And it's a shame that Mayor Wu is not gonna do a darn thing about it.
Well, listen, they're all part of it. There this is, this isn't small potato stuff. This is big potato stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. No.
I mean, he just made everybody look bad. He didn't, he he took them all out with one with one with one strike.
Yep.
I I don't know what. I keep giving props to attorney Corey Hopkins, um, who got the, she's gotten several requests and also is now suing the county for the sidebar transcripts, but I give her a lot of credit for the balls and the ability to get certain information, including the um, the email communication showing that the feds did talk to Commissioner Cox, but also to um, another woman by the name of Laura, who actually got the calendar invite, um, showing Commissioner Cox's calendar and the Kelly Dever meeting. So.
We almost, we almost had her on. Oh. Um, Mayberry. Uh, what's her name?
Corey Hopkins? She'll come on. I'll talk to her.
No. I already talked to her.
Why won't she come on?
It's uh, she's not gonna be going on some shows. Um, but it was close, so. Yeah. Um.
He can really sling it.
She's on ice for all shows for the time being, so. Yeah.
We'll see.
No, I'm just telling you.
John, you're retiring from us. Are you gonna go run for select board?
No, no, no. You know what? The houses are so overpriced in Canton. It's it's disgusting.
I I believe I gave you guys, you and Eric, several uh, locations that were fit in your your budgets.
I don't wanna rent. I wanna own.
Lucky pitching a tent down by the the uh, ball field behind the Kennedy. That that that's not gonna cut it.
Yeah, or down pitching a tent on the soccer field down on Pleasant Street in the woods. Uh, Bruins are going to shootout, uh, Lucky.
I I see that. Every once in a while, you see me put my glasses on so I can see the actual TV.
Yeah.
Cuz I can't see the TV right now.
Seventy-inch TV. How can you not see it?
I'm blind as a bat without my glasses.
That explains the basketball net.
Exactly.
I wonder, I wonder if Gary Titus saw the uh, select board meeting or at least
He was at another meeting. He missed something tonight.
He was at uh, he was at uh, Extreme Trivia tonight.
Oh, that's right. He wanted us to go to Extreme Trivia, but we can't do that. We wanna go to Cronky Oke.
At the Cafe Pacific.
Oh, do they have, do they have Cronky Oke in Quincy?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess most do. Most Chinese-American food places have karaoke.
Yeah.
The one in North Weymouth does Cafe uh, Center, and um, there's a really fun one in Faneuil Hall that has
I'm not going to Boston.
God.
Are they lost?
I'm with you.
No, it was a horrible move. He he freaked me. Dumbass.
We'll wait, we'll wait to see what happens with the Bruins before they goodbye. We'll like, we'll let Lucky announce the end of the Bruins game and then then we'll go.
Well, we got over the
Saved by Swamen.
Say what uh, who's winning in the shootout?
It's zero zero. Swamen just made a big save.
Oh, that's huge.
August is waiting for, wait, if we're gonna, August. Not going to the Calum.
No, not China Sky. Um, um, I'm having a brain fart of the actual name. The one in Faneuil Hall. It's where all the the under all those bars around there used to allow all the girls and underage. That's how I remember that location.
Bruins just scored.
All right.
Who scored?
Uh, guy's got like twenty letters for a last name. I couldn't even tell you what what it is. Ninety-two.
Number ninety-two. John, you know. Number ninety-two for the Bruins. Uh, it is uh, oh, uh,
This one. Bruins just won.
Cute.
Bruins won.
Chris could cuz nut
Right. Good luck. Just it's a lot of numbers, a lot of letters.
I'm gonna put his name into the chat and let's see if anyone can say it. All right, it's K.
How do you gonna know?
S N U T.
Yes, girl, Ryan. My God. Yes, girl, Ryan, Hong Kong.
That's his name. That's who scored for the Bruins. Cuz nut enough. Cut his nuts off, yeah. His name's Ma- and oh, his first name's Marret, M A R E T. Yeah.
Did you play hockey with him, John?
Oh, cut his nuts off? No. He's from Moscow. Yeah. Yep. Young kid. He's five eleven, hundred eighty-four pounds. I haven't seen a hundred eighty-four pound since I was a sophomore in high school.
Well, this is fun, John. Let's close this out.
Okay, well, let's go. Eric, your turn. Close this out, Eric.
Uh, it was a good day.
Wait, Lucky, don't hang up. Lucky, don't hang up.
I'm not hanging up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Eric.
Progress in Canton. Canton's making progress is what I really should say. And uh,
Well, then say it.
I think it's going in the right direction and there's a lot to play out still.
What's gonna play out?
Got a lot of stuff going on. You got Karen Reed, uh, civil lawyer. You get, there's just so much going on. I mean, you you got, you got another case involving alleged witnesses. You know what I mean?
Yeah. All right, well, say goodbye to us.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye, Eric. Goodbye, John.
Bye, Lucky.
Goodbye, guys.